The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since we have a quite packed agenda, I'm going to forego the invocation. So please be seated. And when you're ready, the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembelbel?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I've received 12 written communications regarding item eight, short-term rental legislative measures. Copies have been passed to city council and the originals are filed in the city clerk's office.
Very much. Department head reports. I have nothing to report.
Department head, not mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is how excited I am to get to this agenda today. I apologize. Thank you. Good Jackie, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. It's been a busy summer, but the crew has excelled. They're almost done with street markings throughout town. They have Wrigley Terrace, Metropolitan Tremont, and two Red Curve ADA spots to finish. They're continuing to pressure wash Front Street, alleyways, benches, parks on Thursdays and Fridays, and continuing to work on the Sombrero Fountain and sweeping every morning, handpicking and doing landscape. They completed some pop hole repairs on Country Club Road, Pebbley Beach Road, and will continue to do more throughout town. They prepped the area for the new JMF scoreboard. Once the engineering plans are approved, that will go in. And of course, they continue to fix any saltwater leaks that pop up. The biggest news this week is that we hired two new part-time crew members, Kevin Saragosa and Luis Herrera. Each work about 20 hours a week and will focus on Front Street landscape. So if you see them around, please welcome them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have one stupid question. You know me, I notice stuff. Remember when we built that, I don't even know what it is, like a lift station or whatever, out there by the fuel dock? It's a, or it's a gas holding thing?
Oh, the fuel tank.
The walkway to the casino and it's on the left-hand side. So the...
Yes, yes.
I love how you built the building to match everything, but that little, it remains gold. Is it gonna be painted like the turquoise, like the building right next to it?
Yes, the fuel tank doors still need to go in, the painting still needs to be done, landscape still needs to be done. Yes, that, that's on the list, very long list.
Thank you. It's just me, I know.
No, no worries. Thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, Michael Alguiria, Fire Chief. One big thing coming, so a change at Pebbley is we're gonna start enforcing, once signage is up, no barbecuing on the beach. We don't allow barbecues down on the front street and we don't, shouldn't allow barbecues on the beach out there as well, next to the hillside. So, once signage goes up, we're gonna be on it, work with sheriffs and everybody in Island Company, make sure there's no barbecuing propane or not, no barbecuing at that beach right there. Other than that, it's a busy summer so far.
Good, you're good. You're popular today.
Yeah. I was just thinking that.
We appreciate your concern, though, for safety always. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, city staff, city council. In the month of July was exceptionally busy for the Sheriff's Department. We had 502 observations made by the deputies. There were 221 calls for service, 49 traffic stops, and 11 pedestrian stops. There were 16 arrests made. A wide range of things, from fireworks, to domestic violence, to drunken public, to unlicensed driver, to DUIs, to warrants. So it was a very, very busy time.
That's good.
Just wanted to remind the public, please come out tomorrow. We're having the national night out right here, across the parking lot. Free food for everyone that shows up. We have hot dogs and water and soda and stickers and all kinds of stuff. So hopefully, it's a big turnout, the entire, you know, all the departments at the city will be there. So it should be a lot bigger than we usually have it. So I'm pretty excited and hopefully, it's a new way of doing things. And that's about all I have.
That's great. Any comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. We'll start off with some relatively good news here. Last time I was here, we talked about our mooring nights with middle of June, or June, middle of July. We were down a little bit at that point for July, probably weather-related or whatever it was. But we ended up finishing out the month of July, actually a little bit ahead of last year. So we ended up with 2,408 boats arrived and a total of 9,022 mooring nights. So about 70 nights more than last year, not statistically significant, but it is on the plus side. So we'll take that one. To something that's a little, not quite as positive, obviously, the harbor clock has a mechanical issue and we are very actively trying to solve that problem. But the issue with that is the internal mechanism was made in Brazil around 1980. And so it's tough finding a part, trying to find a fix for that. So we may end up having to, to replace the internal and maybe the external as well. But we are working on that. So we'll hope to have that done as soon as possible. The clock itself was actually put in in 1982 by the Rotary Club, it was donated by the Rotary Club. So I thought I'd throw that in for you. The, so, we'll talk to them too. And last but not least, we just finished up a drone project out at the mole, where we did some drone work, taking a look at the traffic patterns and people getting on and off the boats, cruise ship tenders. And we use that for planning purposes as we go further into the mole Phase Two project. We had 330 calls for service since the last time we talked, eight Baywatch assists, three sites, six emergency medicals, and let's go with 197 security patrols.
Very nice.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Matt Baker, Finance Director. I just wanted to provide some early June numbers for visitor-driven revenues. Hotel TOT for the month of June looks to come down about 9% from June of last year, which brings in TOT for hotels, down 2% for the year. Vacation rentals for June were down 1.6%, but up 3% for the year. So that kind of washes out for the most part right now. We're down a little for the year, but we're still having some payments trickle in. So it's, we're gonna be close to matching last year. Again, that's right around where we forecasted when we were doing the budget and ahead of where we had budgeted last year. For the cross-channel, the month of June relatively flat. Visitor or cross-channel passenger counts was up 0.3% for June, but was up 4.4% for the year. Nightly moorings for the month of June were up 8.6% and up 4.7% for the year. So just slightly up from a head count standpoint. Then, as Kevin mentioned, for the month of July, nightly mooring revenues were up 5.7%. A lot of that's driven by the increase that went into effect July 1. But some of that is from increased boater activity. Other than that, I'm currently working to prepare the financial statements for audit this fall, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, council. Madam Mayor, David Hart, Community Services. This will be our third year partnering with NFL and NFL Flag Football with our leagues for kids first grade through eighth grade. The league will be starting September 14th. Evaluations will be on September 7th. Sign up now at thecityofavalon.com website. This, starting tomorrow, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, as well as next Wednesday, the 20th, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, the Avalon Ocean Club, which is ran by our lifeguards, Madison and Dempsey, along with Newport Aquatic Center, will be doing an introductory to outrigging, where they'll put you on one man, let you test a six-man as well. Everybody's welcome, from the ages of nine all the way up through adults. And so again, that's tomorrow from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, as well as next Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. You can come either day. And they'll teach you how to get in outrigger and paddle and learn a new activity to do on the ocean. Also, we've had the Catalina Outdoor Adventure Club, which is run by Ryan Cordero. And he also runs our fishing derby. He's a volunteer for our fishing derby who runs it in the mornings, Wednesday mornings. He was able to put together a free kids' fishing derby boat trip, which will be held Wednesday, August 20th, from 9:30 AM to 2:00 PM, ages eight and up. You can register with them at theoutdooradventureclub2025@gmail.com. We also have this information on all our social media pages, as well as our website. All gear, bait, and fishing equipment will be provided. Parents and chaperones are welcome, but the space is limited. They're gonna be taking these kids out deep sea fishing. They've been fishing off the pier all summer long, and now they're gonna get an opportunity to see what it's like to go fishing out to deeper waters. So we're really grateful for the Catalina Outdoor Adventure Club for, again, utilizing our greatest resource, the water. Last but not least, the community service will be doing our yearly backpack giveaway Monday, August 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock at Avalon Kids Park. We'll be giving away over 250 backpacks with supplies in it to all kids from eighth grade on down to TK. We will also be giving school supplies to the teachers at Avalon Schools to make sure that they're properly supplied to start the school year. Again, this event starts at 1:00, August 25th, that's Monday, August 25th, with the backpacks being given out at 2:00 PM. We would like to thank the Yacht Club for donating the money to be able to make sure that we can do this for our community. So again, a big shout out to the Yacht Club for coming forward on this. Any questions?
That's great news. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Some quick July stats for code enforcement. They issued 280 citations, towed 12 abandoned golf carts, motorcycles, and vehicles, wrote 41 case reports, 25 red tags, responded to 35 animal control calls for service, and 31 emergency calls, and so much more. July was a really busy month. I asked Carolyn to run some stats on subsidies for 2025. A total of 818 households have been issued subsidy cards, 116 for this last month of July. The contract with U.S. Offsite, the modular housing builder for the Civic Center Housing Project, has been completely signed and executed. We had our first kickoff meeting this last week, and we're really excited to get that project off the ground. And save the date, Saturday, October 25th, will be our Fall Bulky Item Household Hazardous Waste, E-Waste Drive-Thru Event here at City Hall. Times to be determined, but that's Saturday, October 25th. And then some stats on the Olens Cube at Vons. For the month of July, we had 78 unique users interact with the machine and deposited 6,380 bottles and cans for redemption. So our numbers are 2,000 or so bottles and cans more than last month.
Excellent. Thank you.
Did I ask you last time, why does that, why does the cube have hours? It's a machine.
So we wanted to be mindful of the fact that it's across from a residential area, and it does have a bright screen, and it does compact the aluminum cans and the plastic bottles. So we just wanted to be mindful in the evening for the residents across the street. And then in the morning time, it allows for CRNR to collect the bottles and cans and for Olens to do any maintenance and repairs in the morning, so.
Okay, cool. Yeah, it just cracked me up when I went there at like 9:00 and it said, "Open at 10:00." I was like, "What?" But that makes sense. Thank you.
Is there any possibility, Jocelyn, of getting either a second machine or upgrading to a larger machine?
Yeah, so we, there's been some interest in the community with some nonprofits and maybe doing some fundraising for a second machine, as well as some businesses around town. So yeah, I would love the opportunity to have a second machine, to have that redundancy. If one goes down, we still have a second machine. In addition, Olens does have a, like a bag drop-off kind of program. So we're also, you know, gonna talk with them a little bit more and see our R, obviously. But I was up at the landfill last week. We had an inspection with CalRecycle, and it was pretty cool to see the roll-offs filled with some of that Olens Cube collection. You know, all the crushed aluminum cans, like up to the top, full with the, one of the roll-offs. So that's really exciting to see that that's gonna be good quality material being shipped off the island for redemption. Yeah.
Excellent. Any other questions? Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Be doing a lot of talking later on today, so I know we have quite a few things on the agenda, so I don't have anything additional to add. Thank you.
Is he a city attorney with us? Is he back from?
He is.
I, I am back with a new daughter-in-law, so everything went well.
Congratulations.
Thank you. No comments.
Okay, county... On the daughter-in-law, or?
Daughter-in-law is awesome.
The council members?
I have nothing.
I'll go ahead. I have a, I will be meeting with LBCC along with Mayor Annie next week, August 12th. And we also have California Contract Cities visiting the island for their summer strategic planning, and that's on August 22nd. And we also have the school starting August 26th, which means we'll have the Women's Forum Mentorship Program up and running again for the young ladies. And then other projects that we're still working on, of course, is Boys and Girls Club and our annual breast cancer awareness event with the Medical Center and Sosse G. Coleman.
Well, I, I don't have anything.
Just a few things. I'll be attending Gateway Cities COG tomorrow in Paramount. I sent out an email to several city staff and county officials, thank you guys for responding back regarding the increase in homelessness that we're seeing in the community, and just trying to ensure that we're both utilizing services that are available to us and also looking for gaps in service where we may be able to provide assistance or facilities or treatment, whether it's here on the mainland. And then just wanted to give a shout out of thanks to city staff, especially the Community Services Department. We had my sister and her family in town for the last month, and so attended Funky Fridays, Movies on the Beach, Beach Bingo, along with my oldest niece participating in Junior Guards. The number of services and amazingness that is out there for families especially to enjoy is fantastic. So I'm hoping that people, as summer continues to go on, even though it feels like it's rapidly coming to an end soon, will take, take part in some of those. If you haven't attended a foam party with like five dozen kids under the age of 15, it's hilarious and just tons of fun. The line dancing is amazing. Your crew is, I don't know how they have that much energy at 9:00 at night to keep dancing. So it's pretty impressive. And then was just going to ask, I have a couple of trips coming up in the fall for my work job, but was, will be in DC for one of them, and so hoping to meet with our representatives and senators while we're there. And then will be in Vegas in Savannah, Georgia in August, which is the worst time ever to go to Savannah, Georgia, but I'm really excited about it. But wanted to see if people had any issues with potentially looking at the date for the first November meeting. I'm unfortunately gonna have to miss it and didn't know if in November, I know sometimes Novembers can be a little bit light on content for meetings, if that's the case, potentially having just one meeting in November, so, or we could have two and I could just miss a meeting. But was just throwing it out there. And then Mary was gonna ask you if you might be available to attend one or possibly two COG meetings for me while I'm gone.
To be determined, but...
Okay, yeah. I'll let you know the dates so you can check and see. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oral communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Hello, Mayor, city council. I just wanted to express some concerns about fire prevention and response at Hamilton Cove. Hamilton Cove has 23 fire hydrants. They are supplied by water, fresh water from the Wrigley Reservoir, as opposed to the city, which uses saltwater system with their hydrants. The problem is not now, but during the drought years, that reservoir has gone nearly dry. In fact, I believe Edison had brought trucks up to fill up, of water to fill up the reservoir. So we're in the position of a palisades after, if we have a couple of years of drought, our fire hydrants will not have adequate water pressure or even any water possibly. So if there's a response to fire, they will not be functioning. In that regard, I think the council should be aware of that, and we either need to have one of two responses. We either, Hamilton Cove fire hydrants need to be hooked into the saltwater system of Avalon, or we need to have Edison put a system that keeps the guarantees that the Wrigley Reservoir will remain full even in drought years, so that we will be able to respond to fire. The second issue is fire breaks. Hamilton Cove is part of the city of Avalon, but fire breaks are all around the city, but not above Hamilton Cove. There are two ridges down which fire breaks could easily be, be put. The slopes are not steep, and they can be put down on the far side of Hamilton Cove and also between Descanso and Hamilton Cove. And since they're being done for the rest of the city, I would ask that the city also consider those being done for Hamilton Cove. The, and the last thing I wanted to mention about fire is that I don't know what the requirements are for short-term rentals to have internal sprinkler systems. But we have four buildings in Hamilton Cove have no internal sprinkler system, buildings three, four, five, and six. And I don't know if that's a requirement for rental or not, or a requirement for safety, but I raise it as an issue that ought to be considered, if it's, if it is required, because they're absent from those four buildings. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You were very succinct in your presentation as well. Thank you. Okay.
Hello there, Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. It is the Summer Discovery Program, right up until when school starts. So let's read books. I'm the librarian here. We're gonna talk about reading books. Every Tuesday and Friday, we do a craft at the library. Tuesday is our Summer Discovery Program craft, generally sort of STEMI. We're gonna do, we did color exploration as a craft today. We're gonna be doing engineering stick structures on the 12th and learning the science of spider webs on the 19th. All sorts of STEMI stuff. We're still doing our storytimes every Saturday at 11:00. And thanks to the, the city, you've been allowing me to come to Art in the Park and do a storytime there at around 12:30. I love doing it. That's a lot of fun. What a good program that is, by the way. My compliments. On the 23rd, we're going to do the second half of our California Edison STEM Day. We have a grant from Edison to do, make your own mechanical toys. It's sort of a slightly advanced tinker toy STEM craft. Looking forward to doing that. I'm gonna start showing movies on the 20th, Wednesday, the 20th, at 6:00 PM. The library subscribes to a database called Canopy, which is sort of an arthouse Netflix. You can log on with your library card, have an astonishing number of movies. We're allowed to show some of them without licenses, because the licenses paid for by the library and, and the system. We're gonna show Death on the Nile, cheesy old mystery, but let's see how it works. Free popcorn. Coming up in September, looking ahead, gonna have an art day with the Barnes Del Park. They do an incredible, you know, craft day. I love it. And let's see, finally, this month's book club is Buffalo Hunter Hunter by Stephen Graham Jones. It's a historical novel about the undead and Abraham Lincoln's buffalo hunters. So it's gonna be kind of an interesting mix of events. Thank you so much for your time. Please come to your library. Don't miss out on your library.
I heard your magician was very, very good.
You know, we had 65 people at a library event. That's like real, you know? Yeah, it was very, 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 very enjoyable. He's one of the magicians I do every two years because he's so much fun. People love him. He's so easy to work with. Come to your library. Thanks so much.
Thank you. You got a standing O. All right. Presentations?
Good evening, council. Bob Greenlaw, I'm the engineer for the city. Tonight, I have members of the Five Corner Design Team here with me to talk about the project. Specifically, we're here to talk about the non-infrastructure portion of it. With me, I have Steve Weinberger of W-Trans. He's our traffic engineer that's been with us the whole project. And then also Brian Hannigan of RRM. He's our landscape architect. So they contributed all the way back 2017, they were initially. That's how long this project's been going on. So like I said, we're here to kick off the non-infrastructure portion of the project. So what is non-infrastructure portion? As part of the Active Transportation Program funding, they have several elements that are funded. For our project, we applied for the construction funding of $3.7 million, and that helped us achieve getting this project delivered. And it also, they awarded us $28,000 for the non-infrastructure portion. Non-infrastructure is an educational and outreach effort to engage with the community and also educate in uses of the new concepts, such as when we build the too many roundabouts in there, how to use those. There will be some questions when we get, get those initially delivered and they're in use. So the ultimate goal of this NI effort is to complete the community outreach and then development of materials for the city website so that users of the facilities can go to the website for some common questions and for education on how to use them. So I'll hand it over to Steve right now for the start of the presentation.
Thanks, Bob. Again, Steve Weinberger, W-Trans. As Bob mentioned, we've been doing this since 2017. Jamie, next slide? Or am I gonna advance?
Okay. We're just gonna be giving you a background on what's gonna be happening out at the intersection and why, and what it's gonna be looking like. And I'll turn it over to Brian, talk about landscaping, decorative elements. And Bob's gonna wrap up at the end, talk to you a little bit about the schedule. Remind everybody where we're talking about, the Five Corners intersection, just right adjacent outside of the city hall out here. The intersection that we observed when we came, we arrived in 2017, Bob asked me to combine, help, help out, and I'm registered traffic engineer. And, you know, based on my look, we had some inconsistencies with road design standards at the intersection. But again, just a quick history, as Bob mentioned, this goes back, our involvement in 2017. There's been a lot of work done since then, as well as getting funding for the project. And here we are about to start construction. The original funding for the project was part of the Active Transportation Program to increase walking and biking, improve the safety of walking and biking. So that's what we've been focused on, although we are also focusing on vehicle circulation as well, coexisting with walking and biking. So when, these photos I'm showing to you, the ones I took in 2017, not much has changed since then. But when we got here, we were looking at a number of pedestrian facilities that weren't raised sidewalks, that crosswalks were being used as sidewalks in the intersection, an oddly shaped rec, big rectangle of an intersection. And you'll see the, again, the side, the crosswalks, the sidewalks there on the right. More, five different entries into a space with no direction on right of way. And again, the, the drain is the concrete pad of the storm bring, coming through the intersection, kind of a raised plateau. So we identified these sort of issues with, with the location. It's actually a combination, in my mind, of three overlapping intersections that do not meet current design standards, awkwardly configured. We have a wide variety of travel modes coming through, pedestrians, bicyclists, scooters, carts, vehicles, trucks. And we actually, there, during the morning school hours, there is a high rate of traffic. We estimated about 1,150 vehicles in that hour. And if you actually calculate it out in terms of its operation, would, would be level of service F during that really short... in terms of its operation, would be level of service F during that really short peak there. This is a diagram of conflicts currently. The yellow, I'm sorry, the blue lines are pedestrian movements through the intersection, red are vehicle lines. Obviously, vehicles take a whole different host of paths through the intersection. Pedestrians, that one crossing through the center, actually people kind of cross everywhere, but I think the bottom line is, there's a lot of conflict points between pets and vehicles in the intersection now. So our designers came up with this double mini roundabout concept that's going to be constructed. So it fits entirely within the existing paved area of the existing intersection. These are one-way circular roundabouts, counterclockwise circulation. Vehicles in the circle have right-of-way, yield on entry, right turns in. And you'll see all the new crosswalks, so for, if I can use the arrow here. So as a pedestrian, there'll be sidewalks connecting all of the crosswalks. So there'll be really focused crossing areas for pedestrians. The one through the center is really key, so you're not forcing a pedestrian to go all the way one way or the other, there'll be options for the pedestrian. Vehicles, obviously, as I said, will be yield on entry, turning right as they enter, with the vehicles in the center of the island having right-of-way. Bicyclists, since this is a slow speed design, the vehicles essentially are traveling at the same speed as the cyclist. So as with other standard roundabout designs for bicyclists, the design approach is, is bring the speeds down, so cyclists actually become a vehicle, and negotiate the intersection as a vehicle. And that is a standard approach in California for roundabout design. We did do a number of simulations with, look at turning, tracking for wheels for different vehicles. This is a standard passenger vehicle, not a autowet size, but a normal passenger vehicle. And you can see there, essentially adequate pavement all the way around for them to make all these maneuvers, and not have to mount up onto the center islands. Fire trucks, this is your largest fire vehicle. We've simulated traveling through these intersections, and you'll see the wheel tracking goes over the top of the center islands. That is standard for roundabouts. That's what the islands are there for, they're there to provide, it's a raised island, so passenger vehicles are discouraged and deterred from mounting up on it, and have plenty of room to go around it, where they're constructed and expected that larger trucks, like fire trucks, will mount up on top of and over them to travel. And the difference, if you're thinking about, we're calling this a mini roundabout versus a roundabout, and that is, in design standards, there is something called a mini roundabout. And the difference is, is that central island with a mini is fully mountable, as opposed to a standard roundabout where you'll see decorative elements, trees, landscaping and such in the middle. So our resulting conflict points, if you remember this slide, the new design's going to go to this slide, significantly reducing the number of vehicle pedestrian conflict points with the new design. We did get into, I won't go into details on here, but we did get into a lot of details with striping, pavement treatments, and Brian will be talking a little bit more about that and show you some simulations. We did have some workshops several years back, where we had a little HO scale model of the roundabouts, and at HO scale vehicles, to show the public who came by, you know, just the general size and maneuverability. And there's the fire truck about to go over the center of the island. There was also a demonstration, your Public Works Department set up the size of those in the street, so people were able to see that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Brian Hannigan with RRM, who's going to talk about landscaping.
Thank you, Steve. Nice to see everyone tonight. I'm going to just take you quickly through the landscape plan for the project. When they first contacted me, they said, hey, we have this double roundabout we're going to design. And I'm thinking, oh, that'd be great, we'll put trees and plants in the roundabout, and it'll look really amazing. And then they say, well, it has to be mountable, you can't do any trees and shrubs in the roundabout. So that was the challenge of this project. It actually made it fun, because we were going to do a design in the middle of the roundabout, so that you'll see in the plans ahead. So we did, I think the great thing about the project too, is just the sidewalks off of the street, and getting the pedestrians, you know, on sidewalks, and reducing those crossings. As you can see, we have landscape along the edges. The new parking lot shown to the right there, on the lower right-hand side of the screen, and then we have all the new sidewalks you can see with the green in there, is the landscaped areas. We also met with the Ackerman Nursery, and they took me on a tour. We looked at some of the plants we'll be able to use in the project, once it gets going. And then we have some also, non-native but drought-tolerant plants to add to it, so it'll be really beautiful when it's all planted. I'll just kind of go through those. There's some images of some of those plants and succulents, some of the native trees. And then some views, just looking at what it'll look like when it's done. This is accurate kind of rendering of the view, and this would be looking down Tremont, and then looking down Avalon Canyon. I'm sorry, that, yeah, that is Avalon Canyon. And then you can just see, again, that, I'd just like to point out, the crossings just being shortened. I'm sure you've all seen it, when school's in session, there's all the kids walking through at different directions and stuff, so this will really organize things. And then we have some parkways along the edges of the sidewalk, where we can do plantings. And there's another above view. This is, the image up on the right is just some ways to do some art in the crosswalks with, you know, painted art ideas. That can happen at the crossings, or in conjunction with the center roundabout. And that's about it on that, thank you.
Can we ask a couple of questions? Can we just ask a couple of questions now, or do you want us to hold it till the end, Bob?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, we'll have questions right at the end. Okay. Down? Down? There we go. Okay, so, where are we at in the project? Hey, we're in construction, right? That's a good thing. So currently, our contractor, Jorodol Construction, local here, is working on the underground utilities. You've seen those go in for the past few months. A lot of the underground ductworks of the conduits are in the ground now, and you're starting to see, you know, the curb and gutter, so the backfill's happening, and the curb and gutter is going in. Mostly on the northerly side of Tremont, we've, we're getting real close on that, of that being done. That was against all those adjacent frontages of all those homes there. We wanted to get that done early on. We still have the one where the stucco fence is, around there, and that's scheduled for the first part of September, right after Labor Day. The fence will come down, and we'll put the sidewalk in there. So working with the owner there, because that's a vacation rental, wanted to make sure that we accommodated him on his schedule. You see now, on the southerly side, we're starting to, next to the storm drain, we're putting in the curb and gutter. That will also have an additional five-foot walkway all along that front, so you're going to have that walkway that you've seen developed on the northerly side, you'll have that walkway on the southerly side. And you also see that now we're taking the curb and gutter, the existing curb and gutter out of Avalon Canyon, and now we're getting ready to set up and pour that. So you should start seeing that being set up like tomorrow, and then we'll be pouring pieces of that, getting that done. And that's in anticipation of our first paving move-in, which is exciting, because we actually see things going back together. And that'll be at the end of September, is the first time that we're going to see some paving Avalon Canyon and Tremont. And we're also getting a subcontractor in to help in the intersection with the gas and water utilities. Been waiting for that, and that's when you're going to see us tear into that intersection one half at a time, and work in the traffic. During that time, that we do have one half of the intersection, it's likely that leg of Tremont that we've been working on, will close down that access to that leg, and you'll be coming through Sumner, when we have to go through that one half of the intersection. Because we still have to keep all the other legs open for everybody to get where they need to go. Realizing that is going to be also when school's in, so it's going to be a little bit of chaos, but we'll try to get our way through that piece of the construction as quick as possible. So part of, the big element of that intersection is there's an existing concrete storm drain that looks like a sidewalk that goes through the middle of the intersection. That concrete storm drain's going to be demolished, and then you'll start seeing those underground pipes going to take its place. And what the goal of that is, it actually gets that very adverse side cross slope to be reduced down, so the intersection becomes flatter, okay, to like 4% only cross slope. So that's coming on. And then you'll start seeing, as we get toward, you know, the October or so, the underground utilities now starting to get the conductors placed inside. And then, as that moves on, as we get into the November range, you'll start seeing all the overhead utilities, what we call wrecking them, that they'll be demolished and taken down.
All along Tremont?
All along Tremont, yeah. So you're going to see all of that go away, all the way past Clarissa, and so there'll be no overhead utilities in this area. And even on Avalon Canyon, that one wire that goes across over here to the park, we've already got that undergrounded. So you'll see new lighting installed with the project. So some new lighting at the intersection, but also along the Tremont frontage, and along the park frontage, we still haven't selected what that would be, but we're thinking that would be bollard-type lighting, lower-level lighting. So here around the City Hall campus, kind of a different look, you know, that's going to accommodate, you know, those users at night. So we have that coming up, and, let's see. Then the second move-in of paving, talking about the intersection, that would be toward that October, November timeframe. We are scheduled, the project was scheduled as far as working days, to be done in May of '26, and we think we're going to beat, far surpass that. The contractors wanting to get done with the project much sooner than that, you know? But it really depends on how good it goes, you know, through the intersection, the construction goes in the intersection. Because that is a tough build, there's a lot of utilities that have to be relocated, there's a lot of tough work in demoing that concrete. But you see that new excavator that Jorodol has brought in, it really gets the job done quick. And he's, he actually got one of our ex-employees that was on vacation here to be working for him for about three weeks. Oscar Teheda is actually back on the island, and he's operating that excavator, so it's good to see him back. And so I think I talked about the construction completion. So, and then, as we get finished with the project, we have November there, November, December, I think it's going to be December, January, just to be safe with it. You'll see, that's the completion also of the NI portion that we're talking about tonight. And that is, people start using it, and we complete our outreach, we complete getting, you know, our products on the website, so that if somebody's asking, how do you use that, or how did this project develop? You point them right to that website, and say, read this first. Because we anticipate putting a drone up, just like we did this weekend, that was really good. We'll talk about that more some other time here, but, you know, that drone that we used over the Mole Project, pretty amazing footage that you can get, a drone that's held at a static point, and then it has a time lapse. You see a lot, you know, a whole span of a day in a few minutes, and all the activities that go there. So that will be really a good educational tool for us, to be able to share that. And then, you know, engaging with the community, engaging with the school, because one of the major elements of this was, you know, working with the school, how to make a safer passage through the intersection, you know, and provide those spaces for a pedestrian to be on a walkway, for a bicycle to have, you know, be able to get in the intersection at a very slow speed. And having that, those traffic control elements engineered in, engineered in the design, so that you have some expectation of where the vehicles are going to be, and where everybody's going to be, and how they're going to operate, you know? Right now, when you go in that intersection, it works, because we have autoettes, and they're open, and it slows speeds, but it's chaos. And you think about, that we have a lot of visitors on this island, the first time they have ever get in a golf cart is probably 10 minutes before they hit this intersection. That is probably not good, without having the correct traffic control. And so that's why this project really is good for that, because, especially as users encounter roundabouts throughout the world, they get used to them. And that's what this educational NI component's about. So, let's see what we have for the next one here. Okay, and then I just wanted to go over what was going to be happening with the housing, because that was a major piece of, as we carved out the frontage of the project. We are doing that 16-space parking lot, you know, so that's that space here, right by, between Finance, right there, that's really the planner area, so we're highest and best use of real estate. So the planner is nice, but the parking is also great there. And as we switch that pad, which is 20,000 square feet for workforce housing, that takes some of the parking away. So how can we efficiently use that parking? That parking lot will have electric vehicle charging, and so during the day here, the employee, that'd be an employee parking lot during the day, where all the employees would park, and then we have our front parking lot here, where we have our-
Yeah.
Okay, we're back.
Yes.
I was just going to finish and say, it was impressive to see every person who didn't live here be able to very easily navigate the entire intersection without, they looked for the first time, it's the first time I've ever seen people who didn't live here not look, like just confused and confounded by that corner. Most times people stop, and they don't know where to go, and so traffic ends up backing up behind them at least three of the intersections. And to see everyone else be able to navigate that without issue was helpful. And I think that, given how incorrectly people use the intersection in front of Vons, we're going to definitely have an education curve for residents that are not used to utilizing, or that stay away from traffic circles, like the one in Long Beach. I would push everyone to try to maybe try out the traffic circle in Long Beach, if you've been avoiding it most of your life, and make use of that to learn how to utilize one, so.
Yeah, they've improved that, but that was-
Yes, yeah.
That's not a, that's not a modern roundabout.
It's not as scary as it used to be, yes.
Yeah, it is a traffic circle.
But that's two and three lanes.
Yeah, this is, I mean-
Yeah, that scares me, I'm sorry.
But anyway, it was interesting, and I think a lot of the confusion will disappear with this design, so.
Okay.
So one other confusing one, though, that I just want clarification on, is by, in between Whitley and Marilla, the Sombrero Fountain. So by virtue of the fact, when you're like in front of the Sailor's Delight or whatever, there's a stop sign there, correct? So you are allowed to take that left, you don't have to go around the fountain, it is not a roundabout, it's merely a decorative piece in the middle of that. Am I right in assuming that?
You're correct, you're correct right now. We do have a striping plan for that intersection. At some point, we can share, if we want to talk about that, get the community talking about that, that will convert it to something more like a roundabout, you know? It will have some traffic control elements to it. Right now, it's, you don't know what to do. You feel like you want to do a roundabout, if you're used to roundabouts, but then it's, there's no guidance with the striping and the signing.
Right, okay, yeah, because I live on Whitley, I take that left all the time.
Yeah.
And one guy today is like, you're supposed to go around, and I'm like, no, I'm not, shut up.
I think the DMV counts it as a roundabout, though. Somebody got dinged on their driving test on the island for not treating that as a roundabout, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wow.
Any other questions?
I had also asked the city manager about that, why the stop sign is so far up on Marilla. It's because it's a roundabout, so you stop and then you're- It's because it's a roundabout, so you stop and you're able to go around.
That's a great observation.
The stop signs are way up from them, from the intersection.
It was a convenient post, I think somebody found to put the stop sign on and then they matched the stop bar, which is supposed to be another element with that, okay? They're in a combo together. Yeah, so it's not at the right location. And Steve has designed, you know, a great set of improvements that we'll talk about sometime in the future. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I think the only other slide I have is just the website, right there. Or if anybody wants a personal tour, just call me, I can show you the elements and I can discuss them, you know, in detail with you. It's always an offer, I'm out there on the job site, so we can talk about the project there and I can show you elements right there inside.
Well, Stephen, Brian, I wanna, we wanna thank you for being here. Thank you for sticking with the project for eight years so far. I hope you're not going anywhere until we get this sucker finished.
And city manager, we're done eight minutes early.
Yeah, good job, Bob. And thank you, Bob Greenlaw. Okay, consent calendar.
Okay, consent calendar, item number one, approval of the minutes from July 15, 2025, regular city council meeting. And the July 24, 2025 special city council meeting, we would ask that the July 24, 2025 special city council meeting be amended to reflect that the city manager was not present. Item two, warrants, approve of total expenditures for July 7, 2025 through July 25, 2025 totaling Item three, adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 2425 fourth quarter treasurer's report. Item four, approve a four-year agreement with ClearGov Inc. through June 30, 2029 for its online budgeting software as service solution, which includes the base platform operational personnel, capital budgeting services, along with its digital budget book, capital project tracking tool for not to exceed an amount of $37,625 in the current budget year and $171,000 over the initial term of the agreement. Item five, authorize the city manager or his designee to execute an agreement for procurement and installation of a new maintenance yard security gate from first-class access control for not to exceed some of $35,000 as budgeted in the annual facilities capital improvement budget project 205007, fund 105506687. And item six, per the city's procurement policy, authorize the city manager or designee to enter into a contract with Catalina Pest Control to perform full structure termite tenting and fumigation of Avalon City Hall facility for not to exceed amount of $30,000 from the City Hall Maintenance Account 10135-5700. And finally, item seven, adopt a resolution issuing a medical cannabis delivery permit to Catalina Cannabis LLC for a 12-month period beginning August 6, 2025.
Would you like to pull any of these? Or does anybody wanna comment on any of these? Okay. But your pleasure, counsel.
I make a motion to approve items one through seven with the changes to the minutes of the July 24 meeting.
I'll second.
Moved in second, a call for the vote.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take an oral vote. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Item number eight, under general business?
At this time, we're gonna ask if we can flip item eight and item nine.
I wrote it here and then write it here. Yes, item number nine.
Okay, first we'll take item number nine, approval of an encroachment permit to install a retaining wall and widen Middle Terrace Road for a single golf cart parking space at 46 Upper Terrace. Jackie Cardera.
Good eve, I will be presenting the encroachment permit for 46 Upper Terrace. The applicant representing the property owner, Richard Woodward, is Peter J. Mokler. We also have Elias Garcia here representing the property owner. The permit application was submitted June 18, and it's an encroachment area for Middle Terrace Public Right-of-Way. The scope of work, we're, they will be removing 12 linear feet of existing four-hydrate stacked stone wall. They'll be reducing the encroach public right-of-way about eight feet. They'll grade and pave the area to allow for one golf cart, and they'll maintain proper drainage towards the existing covert or swale area. No impacts to adjacent properties, and I'll go more into detail with this site plan here. So if you could see on the right side of the screen, that's where the golf cart area would be. Again, that's, right now, they're encroaching in about 10, 10 to 12 feet, where we're moving, or they're removing eight feet of the public right-of-way, they'll convert that into public parking. And one of the questions, city staff asked, why not extend that all the way through? You could see there's some pretty steep on the left-hand side hillside. There's utilities there, there's bedrock, so it's really clear foundation. The reason why they need to actually do some improvements on that area on the right is because the hillside is unstable, they'll have to do tiebacks there, they'll, a wall. But the engineering is not severe, and the other side, if they would have to do the same thing, the engineering would be tremendous and they would probably abandon the project. So this is a good opportunity for us to regain public right-of-way. So according to our municipal code, section 105 and 106, this is desirable and necessary? I would say yes, as it reduces the encroachment by eight feet. There's no adverse impact, it actually creates a parking space for the residents there to use. And then there's no alteration to the drainage, there's no impacts to the utilities, and there's no public safety concern in that it improves access for residential emergency vehicles, service vehicles, and it helps the drainage and the water flow in that area. The applicant will maintain improvements and record maintenance easement with conditions. The permit conditions are gonna be for five years, and city manager designee will establish insurance bond requirement and maintenance standards. Again, if there's no action on this area, then they would, we would miss the opportunity to regain some public right-of-way. So the action would be to approve the encroachment permit, authorize city manager to finalize terms, and we also have the property owner representative here if you have any questions at this time.
Do you have any questions or comments? Quite an undertaking.
Yes, I agree.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to find that the criteria specified in AMC section 4-9.106 is met and approve an encroachment permit at 46 Upper Terrace for installation of a new retaining wall and widening of Middle Terrace Road to accommodate a single golf cart parking space. Authorize the city manager or his designee to approve an encroachment permit, maintenance agreement, and recordable covenant applicable to the proposed encroachment at 46 Upper Terrace, and authorize city staff to negotiate with the property owners to determine the amounts of the required bond and liability insurance.
They're second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, a call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
And just out of curiosity, who is the applicant or the home? Oh, okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't really need to say anything, I just, all these new faces.
Good evening, mayor, and city council and city staff. My name is Elias Garcia, and I'm the general contractor that will be overseeing the project.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, if you have questions, I'll...
I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight, which is item number nine.
Okay, item number eight. Item number eight is bringing back the short-term rental legislative measures that were before council a number of weeks ago. Coming out of that discussion, BBK and myself, staff worked through a number of modifications to the already modified legislation without completely rehashing what we previously did as council recalls and residents recall. We made a number of changes to the regulations in primary, we made some regulations to our ability to enforce those regulations. I think those two things were really designed in order to try to rein in the short-term rentals that were causing neighborhood problems, causing problems with long-term residents, the so-called party houses. And while they may be few, few of them, they are, when they're noisy, they get everybody's attention. And those are really the ones that we want to be able to regulate document violations in real time. We're very confident we're gonna be able to do that with our new system with host compliance. In addition to that, coming out of our discussion with council, we've added a few other measures that you have before you tonight. And Scott, I don't know if you want me to go through these, if you wanted to cover these? Scott Campbell?
I can, I can go through them from the staff report. I'll just go through the ordinance very briefly and go through what they are. You'll have the ordinance, it is a redlined ordinance in front of you. I think the important one is that the council had asked for penalties for violations of the, of the terms of conditions of approval or the ordinance. There's actually a state statute that says that violations of transient occupancy ordinances are to be penalized rather severely if the city decides to go through a, pursue a criminal path, but can also pursue a civil path. And for the criminal path, those would be fines of up to $5,000. And so we have taken your direction and stiffened the penalties for those that violate the act. It is 1,500 for the first violation, 3,000 for the second, 5,000 for the third. Those are the state penalties if we decide to go pursue criminal. The civil penalties remain the same, 100, 200, and 500. The other changes that we made, the substantive changes that we added, notification via email, we added the provision that when there is a hearing for a transient license, that the owner of that unit must attend in person, either virtually or in front of the city, so that we actually can see who is being granted a license. Next thing is we set the limit at 410 units, so that there'll be 410 transient license permits, CUPs or grandfathered CUPs. And once we reach that, there will be a waitlist established. And what we're going to do is we're gonna bring back a policy for how to create the waitlist and how to get off of that. One of the things that David and I have discussed is that rather than have kind of a rolling waitlist where, you know, you're having hearings all the time and it's first come, first served, one concept may be to have an annual CU, our transient license day where we have, okay, we have 10 spaces open, we then accept applications, and if applications are complete, then we do a drawing or some kind of determination from those applications. We're just thinking about the concept, but I think rather than having a rolling waitlist like we do with the vehicle permits, doing this all at once makes sense to us, but ultimately we're gonna bring that to the city council. Other changes in section 3-1.310. This deals with the fact that a transient license is not a commercial use, it is a residential use, it is a use that is related to residential uses. And that's important under state law and under your municipal code, because if it is determined that an applicant has five residences or five residential units throughout the city and is using four of those five as transient rentals, the planning commission can determine that that person is using this as a business, not as a related use to their residence, and can deny a transient license on the basis that this is really a commercial use, not a residential use. The purpose of this section is, one, to recognize that this is a, these are operated in commercial zones of the city, and that the use should be primarily commercial, not primarily residential, We've also put in provisions that if you are, if you are, if you have a transient license or a CUP, and that it is revoked, that in most instances, that's a permanent revocation, and then the next owner of the property would be able to reapply. But if it has been revoked, we have general provisions that that is a ban on that present owner coming and renewing a transient occupancy license. Again, that only occurs when it is revoked, and there are some exceptions to the rule. That's what the council had directed us to do. We can, we continue the encouragement to use these units at least 10 times a year. That is really pursuant to the fact that the coastal commission wants us to grant access to visitors coming to the island, and so if you have a transient rental and you're only using it once or twice, that's, that's not allowing as much access to coastal areas as if you're using it 10 times. So this is to encourage the actual use of transient rentals by people that give them. And then one of the things that has been discussed in a lot of the emails that I have seen is the three violations rule and that your transient rental license or CUP must be revoked. Now, what this means is, it's not that your neighbors complained three times, it's not that you've been accused of violating your CUP or transient permit or conditions of approval three times. It's that there's been three violations of the terms of approval or the ordinance that have been adjudicated, either by the planning commission, by the city council, or a court, or you've accepted a penalty and paid the fine. And if that happens three times, this ordinance says that if you've been through three of these adjudicatory proceedings, three options, and you're still in violation, that the city must revoke that CUP. So it's not just neighbor complaints, it's you go through due process three times and you have three violations after due process, and at that point, the city should revoke or shall revoke the license, and that will be another subsequent hearing. And then lastly, I think... I think that those are it for the major changes, although we are requiring that people, that you have an agent that is available and that if there are complaints, that they are addressed in 30-minute time from getting a complaint. That's a requirement to make certain that if these, there's violations occurring and there's neighbor problems, that they are promptly addressed. And I think that is the majority of the changes. There's a, and then we're coming back every year for the council to determine if the restrictions are correct, if there needs to be an adjustment. As we discussed at the last meeting, we will come back to the council, one, with a policy as in terms of the waitlist, if we need one, and then the second is, we are gonna come back with consideration of an overlay zone. What an overlay zone would be is looking at, are there certain areas of the city that maybe have so many transient rentals that we don't wanna allow anymore in that area, and we would impose an overlay on that area? and we would impose an overlay on that area? That's a much more complicated process than the ordinance. We have to go through certain notice requirements, we have to have maps, and so that may take a little bit longer. So this ordinance would go into effect in 30 days from the second meeting, and we'll bring back the overlays, the concept of an overlay zone later this year. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we did try to take all of your suggestions and put them into the ordinance.
Well, let me ask, city manager, did you have anything to add?
I would just like to add that where we're at currently, and with the cap that's proposed, we'll probably most likely exhaust or be real, real close to that cap within the next six months, I would say, anticipating that we, you know, we average getting about six to eight of these a year applied for. So, you know, I think where we're going to be is we're going to be at, at the cap, we're going to be right back to where we are essentially for the last two years, which is, you know, frozen at the number that we have. Once we work through what is before planning, and filed with the city, present those to planning commission, depending on what their decisions are on those current applications, it's most likely we're going to be right at that cap. You know, so I think that, you know, a decision on, I'd really love to avoid the issues that we run into with the vehicle waiting list. And that's why, you know, as Scott mentioned, we've talked about some other ideas, this lottery system where everybody that's waiting gets pulled in at the same time, and we're not doing these one at a time, but we wait until there's a vacancy of five or 10 of them before we enter that and open it up between, before anybody waiting there. But we can bring those, those issues before council and planning commission at a, at a later date.
And just for clarification for me, the, the banked units which are currently occupied by year-round renters, that's included in the 410?
It is.
Okay.
We, we contemplated not including those because we want to obviously encourage that, and we do encourage that, but to not include them, I think would not give us an authentic number of what the cap is, because if the tenant moves out and those become available, they do become, they're, they're real potential CUPs. So what that number is, is a full number of everyone that's operating or could operate as a, as a CUP or short-term rental.
And I just have a couple more questions. When you talk about coastal access, what is the?
Let me explain that.
Okay.
So, so what the coastal commission has said is that transient license CUPs or transient license rentals are a way to allow members of the public accommodations in coastal communities, and is something that the plan, the coastal commission encourages. And cities that have put an outright ban on transient rentals have had those bans overturned by the coastal commission, because the coastal commission looks at those bans as limiting access to the coast.
Right.
So the thought is, if we are requiring transient rentals to have 10 units or 10 nights of use, that makes certain that it keeps that, that access to the coast available versus if you can get by with just one night a year, that's a limited, or it limits the number of units available for visitors to come. So, so that was the coastal commission.
Okay, but my question is, is this, the entire city of Avalon considered coastal access?
Yes.
Okay, that was, thank you.
Every, yeah, you're the only city in California that, that every inch of you is covered by the Coast Act.
Okay, thank you. And then one other thing, it says on the violations, it says 200 for the second, 500 for each additional violation that occurs within one year, and it says 500 for each additional violation. So if we're going to look at revocation after three, how do we get all these additional violations at 500 bucks?
Well, there's certain, there are certain, certain provisions, certain violations that aren't, that aren't counted as the three strikes, and so that would follow for those. In other words, you don't, you, you're operating without a license, and you're caught without a license, and you cure, and you do that several times. There are, there are certain non-automatic revocation things that if you're continuing to violate them, you're going to incur that $500 penalty.
Okay, and our planning commission and plan, and planning department will know those?
We're going to keep them, yeah, now that we have updated computer systems, we're going to do much, we have a much better ability to keep track of each property and what's going on with each property.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody up here have questions before we?
Yeah, so tagging on the, the fine structure, the criminal one, certain violations related to threats to the public health and safety, do we have examples of what that might be?
Those would be, the way that, that though, that the state law has looked at those are loud parties, where you're disturbing your neighbors, you know, and so you are disturbing their, their peace and quiet, those would be considered, you know, violations that, that damage the health and general welfare of, of a city, of, or of residents.
Okay, I like that.
Anything else from you?
I'm wondering, what are they going to use, like what data are they going to use for that, like police reports or complaints that we receive through the city?
That's what we're using our new live 24/7 monitoring system for. So an individual, somebody will call in, say, here's the problem, 123 Catalina, we're having, there's a loud party, there's, they report it, live person takes that, they have the contact information for the on-island manager, they call that person, the clock starts. There has to be resolution of that within that 30-minute period, and if they don't answer the phone, and we call back within 30 minutes, or get a resolution back to the, to the, to the live operator within that time period, that's a violation. We get a report, we come in Monday, we're going to have a list of those reports, we'll compile them by the weekend, weekly, monthly, you know, on each of these properties. We have not had the ability to do that until now.
And, and again, this language is in state law, it exists already, we have the ability to do it under state law, we're just putting it under the ordinance so it's clear, so that people, you know, when you look at how you're going to comply, you look at the ordinance, you don't have to look at the ordinance and then hire a lawyer to go look at state law. We've put it all in the same place.
So in that example that you just cited, Dave, so that would be one strike plus a thousand dollar fine?
Uh, I don't know that it'd be one strike, well, I guess, yeah, I guess it would be.
It would be, yes.
Right.
Okay.
And again, that is if the city decides to go the criminal route, you can also do the infraction route, which is $100.
Right, so, so we have to go one or the other, or since both of them are in the ordinance, it would be on a case-by-case basis?
It's going to be a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, but I could see a situation, for example, if we get a call and we get loud complaint, and we find out it's not a registered, then we could go for the death penalty there. I mean, you know, right, so we don't have to like, okay, that's one, two. I mean, if they're not in compliance, if they're not paying their TOT, if they're not registered, there's things that we can escalate and bring it to the planning commission for a revocation. But if it's a straight-up noise ordinance violation, too many people at the property, that violation, I mean, those are the ones that would be one, two, and three strikes.
And then I had another question about, on the amendments to the ordinance here, number 13, that says the city council will annually review the need for additional regulations to the requirements for issues of TRLs. So that means that annually, we're going to go through this process, and if in that year, we discover that something is or is not working, such as the cap or anything else, or the way we're handling the violations or something, we can then change that at that time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we'll set up a designated time of the year that's most convenient, so it's routinely done at that time of year, so council expects it, residents expect it, and we can address that.
A question that was brought up through some of the public comments, we received the written comments, that I thought was worth exploring potentially, I don't know if we want to include it in this iteration, or if we want to bring it back for discussion, was the idea of having, it reminds me of a attendance policy that I used for a company I used to work for. If you had an absence that counted against you, similar to a strike, if you had a certain amount of time without a further absence, then that absence fell off of your, your absence card, right? So the idea that the goal of strikes isn't necessarily to remove access unless it's a repetitive issue that doesn't get resolved. If someone is being diligent about resolving that, should we look at possibly saying, if you had a strike, but you fixed the issue, and your tenants that are coming in are abiding by the rules, and you're being a great manager, and you have someone on site that responds quickly, can that fall off after a certain amount of time? Is that something that you guys would be possibly open to?
Within one year or what?
Maybe a year, yeah.
Well, my concern, I like that, but when a complaint is made, if it is issued, if the, if the, if it's resolved within that 30 minutes, do they automatically have to get a strike? I mean, if they've gone, that the property managers have been able to go over and stop the noise?
Yeah.
You know, you know, smooth feathers, does that have to go as a strike?
Well, no, that's our goal, right? That's our goal, is to fix the problem. So if they are attentive and on it and resolve the problem, I do not view that, we, I don't think we would view that as a strike. It's, it's the where they don't respond, they don't solve it, it's ongoing, or it stops and starts up again.
Because that's my issue, is when they don't respond, there's, there's no resolution.
Right.
And the neighbors have to spend two days with a party house, so, yeah, okay.
Right, right.
Again, council member of Ponce, the purpose of the, the, the fine structure or penalty structure is to gain compliance with the conditions of approval. If people are in compliance with what they've agreed to and what the ordinance says, we're not going to be revoking it. It's only when there's incidents, they don't respond, they don't fix it, and if that goes on for three times, at that point, we're looking at revoking the permit through due process hearings.
If a complaint comes through?
Compliance is, is the most important thing.
If a complaint comes through, the 30 minutes pass, and nothing was done the first time, are the owners or whoever they are able to appeal that complaint? Like say, oh, there wasn't a party, there's no proof?
It's just a complaint at that time. We cannot impose, we, we can issue a citation, okay, but it's just a complaint until it's acted upon. In other words, until you actually say, yes, I did it, and pay the fine, or unless it goes to either the court or the planning commission as the administrative body, or appeal to the city council, all these things, remember, you can appeal to the city council. Until it goes through that process, it doesn't count as one quote, strike.
And who creates the citation?
Multiple layers of due process here.
Who creates the citation?
Code enforcement.
Okay, so this happens at 2:00 at night, the people don't respond in three hours, and we're going to call code out there?
Oh.
Well, it won't happen then.
No, it'll be based upon the reports and, and what host compliance.
Oh, okay, okay.
The information host compliance provides to the city.
We'll have the documentation, and Monday morning, they fail to comply, Friday night, midnight to 12:30, whatever it might be, and follow up with the detail, but now we have the detail that verified.
Right, excellent, excellent. Okay.
Also, on the, on the whole cap number, I remember the last meeting when we talked about it, we were like, um, maybe this, uh, we just kind of pulled it out of the sky, and now it's there, and I'm like, oh dang, but, you know, we can revise it in a year, but, so after that meeting, I reached out to the county assessor's office, and I just got information today. I asked them, what are the total number of dwelling units in Avalon? So I just found out today, there's a total of 1,864 dwelling units. It's broken down by single-family units, single-family resident units, 353 condos, 495 apartment units, 1,016. There's 4,200 people that live here year-round, so that number to me just blows my mind right there. So we're all cramming into a lot of small spaces. But then, at the same time, I got an email from the assessor, from Jeff Prang's office, you know, talking about the 2025 assessed values by city. So I looked at Avalon, and our assessed values went up 4.5, yay homeowners, good for you. But they have, their dwelling units differ, they have SFR, single-family residential is 949, residential income, which I did reply to this email and say, what does that mean? I'm guessing that's a vacation rental, residential income, I don't know. And then the next one was commercial industrial, and that's 442. So maybe that's apartments, I don't know, but I did ask for clarification, but I didn't get it before this meeting. But, you know, I was just doing, you know, math, I mean, so if we take this one that I requested the information from the assessor's office, 1,864 dwelling units, and then I added up all the ones that could not ever be vacation rentals and stuff like that, you know, eucalyptus beacon, blah, 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 there's 255 of those units. So if you just take that and subtract those 255, there's only 1,609 units to deal with. And then we want to, you know, 410 of those, so that's 1,200 units available. Like, it's, it's, I don't know, it's, it's just kind of scary when you, when you look at all of that. There's a lot of people here and very little places to live.
Yes, and unfortunately, I don't believe the majority of the people in Avalon could afford to live in the, in a lot of these places.
I agree.
You know, I mean, $1,800, we're going to start paying for a little one-bedroom, you know, I mean, and then if you're a family of four.
Well, if you can find something for 1,800.
Yeah.
They're, they're 22 and 23 now.
I know, I know.
And so I'm guessing that's why there's a ton of people cramming into one place.
Exactly.
But anyway, that's just a food for thought, council, as we go forward and review this and look at this, I, I think the 410 number is a little high myself, and we should be looking at attrition and going down, and that's, everybody knows that's where I stand.
So, would any of you like to speak?
Sir?
And you will be? Okay, let me, make a comment, you're limited to three minutes.
Yeah.
And we're not going to allow coming back and forth and back and forth and back and forth for three minutes unless there's something totally different that has not been brought up at all.
I understand that, thank you. And I have logistical questions, and I have data to present, so I pulled out, I audited all the calls that we've received the whole month of July, we had 1,700 reservations, 71 after-hours calls, none of them were from residents, they're all in guest house. So I'm happy that you have a new system, because that will give us the offer to respond within the 30 minutes and have people reach to us directly, that's our biggest struggle. So we have system in place, we have data to present, yet no one from the community ever reaches out. So they will call the neighbor, they will call, you know, anyone but the management company, in my experience, and getting proven through the data that I have, over 1,700 reservations in just one month. So I like that idea. Now, when we're talking the updates, we're going to have to update the window signs, because we've just gone through a whole project of numbers, so I'm guessing the emergency 24 hours is no longer going to be the rental management company, will be the city?
It's going to be the host compliance number that the city will provide.
So we'll have to update.
But we, we also have a requirement that they have in, in there, the onsite or on-island manager is also there.
Okay, so all of that will get updated once it gets, once it passes. The biggest problem I have that's not being addressed is our transfers of permits. A property goes into escrow, could be 90 days, all the reservations, the advanced bookings make it into the escrow to be honored, but we've also passed the regulation several years ago that it only transfers once or twice. So what do we do in situations where a house has been a vacation rental for, you know, 20 years, there's people that have paid, there's huge families that have everything planned, and you're sold out, and you do your due diligence, again, you put it through escrow, what happens next? What happens, why are those people being penalized? Is there, is that being considered in any shape?
I'm sorry, could you explain?
So, future reservations, a property sells, someone else takes over, the permit doesn't transfer because it's not transferable. How are we dealing with that situation?
And, and you're, is this a property that has one transfer left on it or does not?
There are some that have none, because we've changed this in 2020, so then they go back to the.
Then when it transfers, the new owner doesn't have the ability to have the CUP, and they would have to apply for a TRO.
So what happens when the escrow closes in the middle of a stay, say? So what happens when the escrow closes in the middle of a stay, say it could be a 20-night booking?
Well, I mean, I think if it closed specifically in the middle of an individual in the property, that would be honored, but future use of that property as a short-term rental would not be allowed until they received a TRO.
And this is not something that you could consider just looking into the past of this particular vacation rentals that have a good standing with the city, and why should they lose it?
With a cap, we're not going to be able to do that, right? With a cap, there's going to be a waiting list, and there's going to be other people waiting for those spots to open up, so just to extend one from a CUP right into a TRO and bypass everybody.
Right, but that property has an established good standing with the city, and we're penalizing that.
If I could, if I could, if I could, the reasoning behind the CUP, and I really don't want to engage in a back-and-forth discussion, but I'll just go over what that transformation was that occurred four years ago. The whole purpose of implementing the transient license was that under the CUP, that automatically went with the land, and the city had no right and no knowledge and no say in who that new owner was and whether that new owner was going to be a good licenser, or a landlord or not. And so the whole purpose was, is that when there is a second sale, you still get it on the first sale, but if there's this second sale, that's a generation or two generations later, that a new owner is going to come to the city, and that new owner has to appear before the planning commission and vouch for what he or she is going to do on that property. And it's not just some person that happens to buy the property and has the same right as the previous owner. So again, it's to encourage responsibility of people that are going to take on these properties to come before the planning commission, apply, and be seen when they're granted a permit to operate their home as a temporary hotel.
Thank you, and that will continue to be if the property transfers to a family member, to a trust, if it continues from father to son.
We're not changing that at all, that is correct. There's no changes in the transfer of properties to trusts or family members.
Okay, thank you, and I understand no one's inclines to consider change. Thank you.
Hi, Debbie Wright, 210 Descanso Avenue. First, I'd like to thank our city council and our city staff for all of their hard work in the transit rentals research and for addressing residents' concerns. I can only imagine how challenging this project must have been. Please allow me to speak before answering my questions as I'm short on time. If I run out of time, I have several people here tonight that are going to relinquish their time to me. I'm going to share some of the same points that someone read for me at the last city council meeting, because they are important and worth repeating. When I refer to "we" and "us," I am speaking about our home and our neighboring residents. We have no backyards on Lower Descanso. We have no alleyway behind us. The houses behind us are two feet away from our bedrooms. While some blocks in the flats have two, three, or four transit rentals within one block, if you include the ones that are directly behind our bedrooms, we have 12 within half of a block. We have had condoms thrown over the fence multiple times, not to mention all of the alcohol cans and Yesiah photos, and it is as disgusting as it sounds. So let's talk about that house behind us for a moment. Their website states it sleeps six. We have seen as many as 16 people in there. It states families only. We see large groups of 25 to 30-year-olds, over 10, 15 people. It states no pets. We have to listen to dogs barking for three, four hours at a time while people leave their dogs in the house, in the vacation rental that they're in, and while they go out to restaurants and bars. Noise carries in the flats, sheriffs are called, neighbors sleep with earplugs. No one should have to sleep with earplugs in this town. In addition, there are two illegal vacation rentals that are not displayed on the map that you have. These rentals do not have a TRO, they do not pay TOT, and they have lock boxes. I would be more than happy to explain to you outside of this meeting how we know that they're doing it illegally. One of these houses applied for a TRO in 2018. Our neighbors signed a petition, fought against it, and won. They did not get the permit due to what the majority of the planning commission considered oversaturation. Before voting on additions and changes to the transit rental ordinance, I would like to request that the city council clarify this evening what they consider oversaturation. Because on Lower Descanso, this is what we consider oversaturation. Lower Descanso illustrates why an overall cap alone and only considering vacation rentals on your property line as oversaturation won't suffice. We need oversaturation that considers neighboring vacation rentals, not just an overall cap, and not a cap on just our property lines. There is no reason why there can't be a cap on all three of the following. They are not mutually exclusive, and there is no reason why all three can't be put into place.
Debbie, so your two minutes is up, if you have somebody in the audience, we'll continue with that, go ahead.
I do. I give my time to Ms. Wright.
Okay.
Okay. A cap on neighborhood oversaturation, this cap should take-
If we're going to be granting time to other people, at least we should identify who that is.
Okay.
Johna Stone.
Johna Stone.
Okay.
Thank you.
A cap on neighborhood oversaturation, this cap should take into consideration how many vacation rentals are within a radius of other vacation rentals. It is clear you see a problem with neighboring oversaturation, all you would agree whether you voiced it in this moment or not. How can you not put into the new ordinances a cap on neighboring, neighboring oversaturation? We live in a town on an island where everyone is on top of each other. You cannot compare us to other cities on the mainland. A comment was made at the previous city council meeting that they were in favor of an overall number for the city because, quote, "it was easier to enforce." I respectfully disagree. It is not about doing what is easier. It is about doing the right thing for the people that reside within our community. It is not difficult to define oversaturated neighborhoods if you have a map. Two, a cap on the total number of transit rentals in Avalon, which we know now that you are working on. Three, a cap on the total number of future transit rentals one owner can have going forward. You most likely can't change the owners who already own multiple transit rental units, but you can cap it for future applicants. A realtor, a construction company, a property manager, or anyone else who has a vested interest in the property should not be allowed to represent the owner at a planning commission meeting. The actual owner should be required to personally come before the planning commission when applying for a TRO, regardless of where they live. I do not believe Zoom calls should apply. If they can't find the time to travel to be here for the planning commission meeting, then they should not be applying. I would like the city council tonight to clarify if neighboring residents will continue to be notified in advance of vacation rental application close to us, that we have the opportunity to fight it, and those contesting the TRO be given an honest consideration. We have been asked for many years to submit complaint forms. I cannot speak for anyone else, but I have been submitting them for years. Never a response, never consequences from the city. Some years I've submitted as many as 12 in one year for one of the vacation rentals behind us, which is directly behind our bedrooms. I have a file full of copies of complaint forms that I have submitted over the years. I also know some of my neighbors over the years have also submitted complaint forms. It has gotten to a point that I rarely submit them anymore because nothing has ever happened, and it has become a waste of my time. I understand the city has hired hosts to handle all the transit rental complaints. This community deserves to know how the city council intends to follow through on those complaints and what the consequences will be. There must be concrete consequences that the city and planning commission follow, consequences that all current vacation rental owners are aware of and those who are granted a TRO in the future.
Okay, again, that's another two, three minutes, but if you, okay, I just want to make one comment. I believe we have covered in this ordinance everything you said, so it's kind of redundant to me because we've really taken care of a lot of this and this.
Okay, with all due respect, it's redundant to you, and I understand that because you have heard it, but the people listening at home have not all heard it, and I believe that they deserve a right to hear this. And you have not made decisions on a few of these things, that's why it bears repeating.
So you're going to give her your three minutes?
Yes.
And your name is?
Tom Roach.
Tom Roach?
Okay.
Okay.
Without consequences, not only will nothing change, it will just continue to get worse. And regarding the $100, I believe earlier, $100 was mentioned for like a fine?
100 or 1,000.
Or 1,000.
Okay, because $100 means absolutely nothing to people who are making the kind of money that they are making on these vacation rentals. We want tourists to come here and have a good time, just not at the expense of those of us that live here. The planning commission follows what you, the city council, put into place. When putting together the final ordinances, you need to give the planning commissioners clear and concise rules to enable them to revoke TRLs when the owners neglect their responsibilities and to deny future TRLs due to neighboring oversaturation. A resident can be on a vehicle waiting list for 30 years in this town. In order for one person to move up, one person has to come off the list. I assume that's also how it's going to be handled for TRLs. My concern is if a resident wants to apply for a TRO, are they going to have to be on the list for 10 to 20 years behind all of the people on the mainland that are not vested in our community, who come here and buy homes to merely add to their bank accounts? It appears that this is where we are headed. The primary focus is always the city and businesses in this town. Vacation rentals have such a huge impact on our community's quality of life, when do people residing within the community matter? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, or thank you for your comments. Okay, anybody else?
The center of 110 Main Lane.
We're going to have to get a little, push it down a little bit, you're hard to hear. Thank you, Sandy.
As it's written, if you, you know, have the TRO, but if you have in the past two years ever rented beyond 30 days, that's null and void, you could have it, you know, renounced. The point is, you know, if you, that implies you have to have your unit available 365 days a year, whether you rent it or not. Let's face it, in the summer, you could be rented full-time. I have, you know, I have a CUP, but in the winter, I've always rented it by the month. So, you know, so that means I can immediately, right now, lose that, which is all right if that's the way you want it, but, you know, if you really think, can you think how many nights are lost when somebody has to have it available and you cannot rent it for 30 days or more? You have to, if you do that, you take yourself out of the game, and then you're losing a lot. And, look, construction goes on more in the winter here. In the winter, I have rented to sheriffs for nine months out of the winter, eight or nine months, I've rented to different people and, or construction people, whatever, and, you know, but so if I have to, if you have to have it vacant, even though we've now gotten things down to we have a much longer season, it used to be a short season, it was steamer started, steamer stopped season. But, you know, if that's the way that goes, I think you're taking away, there is a demand in the off-season, but not by the month, I mean, not by the day, but by the month. It's just, I think somehow that's skewed, and that's a lost opportunity.
And that's an interesting comment, I guess we can look into that because that is kind of interesting. If I have a CUP and I do it all summer, but then I want to rent to a teacher for nine months, what is that?
That's the point, you can't do it.
The 30-day requirement is if you have, when you apply, if you apply for a TRO now or applied for a CUP, if you had a long-term tenant in there and rented it for 30 days or more, you had to wait two years before you could do it, not if you have one.
Okay.
Okay, if you're applying, it prohibits you from getting issued one, the planning commission cannot issue one if you've been year-round renting without a two-year absence.
Not year-round, just that in the winter, it used to be-
Yeah, so you can do that since you have a CUP, then you can-
It was always, you know, tourists in the summer, and you could rent to teachers, or now-
And you're still allowed to do that.
There's a lot of construction going on.
I understand.
So you need, construction's basically done in the winter, in the off-season.
So you're allowed to do that, Sandy.
Yes, if I could, if I could, transient rental law-
Wait, excuse me, city attorney?
Yeah, Sandy, state law governs this. State law says that transient rentals are for 30 days or less. Longer than that, state landlord-tenant law governs, okay? So they're not transient rental, it's another thing, and you can rent it for two months, three months at a time, that's not a transient rental. It's a, it's a covered, it's considered a lease under state law.
I realize that, I've read that, but I mean, I'm just saying that it's, the way that this, that the Avalon TRO is going to read, it appears that if you do rent it longer, 30 days or longer, then, you know, you can lose it, so whatever.
No, you don't.
No, no.
No.
I know, but, well, that's the way it appears.
No, I'm just saying it-
From what I could see, and all I can see is what I can see online, because I have no other source of information.
Well, our city attorney and our city manager say you're good to go.
You're good to go with short-term rentals.
I'm not asking for myself, I don't care for myself.
For anybody.
But I have, I have year-round rentals, and I always have had, and I've had them, I'm lucky that they came through my family, my rents are below market for every year-round rental I have.
Okay.
I'm just saying that this, that could be an issue.
Okay, well, we clarified it this evening, so hopefully it's clearly clarified.
It's also, Sandy, in section 3-1.30, purpose, the purpose says this just governs rentals of 30 days or less.
Yeah, well, okay, good, because I could see in this proposed new ordinance that, to me, it could easily be read another way.
Like you're interpreting it, yeah. Okay, you got people behind you.
Good evening, can you hear me? My name is Melanie Owens, first time at the podium, we're in our 30th year of owning at Hamilton Cove, one of the happiest people out there. And one of the things that I've just picked up on is we've been renting our place short-term through two agencies, one was CIVR, and we've been with Hamilton Cove Real Estate for many, many, many years now. And I've noticed that there is something that must have changed in the almost 30 years we've been renting, and one of them seems to be that 28 years ago, there were no such things as Airbnb, overtown ownership with no management on the island. And I think a lot of the problems and the issues that you're currently dealing with today has to do with overtown Airbnb people who have a lockbox on their home, they do not take a deposit, nobody's out any money, nobody has to follow any rules, there's no accountability in that regard. Now, I would say, if you live in Avalon and you're Airbnb-ing, you're doing it the right way, not the ones that are doing it from overtown. I don't know when Airbnb actually started hitting the island, but I would say it hasn't been 25 years ago, and it wasn't 20 years ago. So that was one of the big issues. The other thing that I was very concerned about is this number that you've picked arbitrarily, 410 CUPs, transient tenant rights, but somebody only has to give you 10 days in a year of TOT to keep that CUP? So if all of a sudden my husband and I decide we're not going to rent, we can just give you 10 days of TOT and keep our CUP? Or do we really have to be renting it? That's something I think you need to really seriously look at. And another thing, city of Avalon, there are other towns in California that require Airbnb, VRBO to pay the taxes directly to you. Avalon, I understand, is not doing that, that the person who is Airbnb-ing their unit is on the honor system to send you that tax. And that kind of, I think you guys want- And that kind of, I think you guys might want to look into that. Because I think some of these places, they're saying they're not really getting the rents that they possibly are. And in closing, 29 years renting. My husband and I are on a lower tax basis. Our condo in Hamilton Cove is free and clear. And every year, we only come over three times a year and we do maintenance and work on our place. Last year, $8,400 out of our pocket, not for repairs, just to pay the association fees, our taxes, our insurances and utilities. We're not making a bunch of money. And I listened to a lot of these meetings where some people think that these renters are just making hand-over-fist bucks up. It's not always the case. And I do not want to be lumped in to a category where that's just simply the perception. It's not fair. Okay? So, look into those Airbnb.
Appreciate your comments and we have them in, we have them for the record to, we have your comments in the record and all that to look into. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Lalo Martinez, Catalina Vacation Rentals. So I want to talk about the 24/7 line we're implementing per city. With CIVR, we're used to that system because we've had a system for the last 10-plus, 10-15 plus years. So we're used to it. My question is, and concern is, when we have a property, they call in, let's just say 1 o'clock in the afternoon, they're having a gathering outside their house. And it's not a huge party, but it's inconvenient just to the neighbors in general. What are we going to do with those kind of calls? Obviously, we've got those 30 minutes, we're going to go and obviously have that courtesy phone, a phone call or go to the property to the guests. But if they're just having a gathering of a property of four bedrooms, let's just say, you know, we're talking about eight, 10 people, obviously the larger the home, the louder it gets. But the neighbor just completely doesn't like vacationers or transient rentals per se, what are we going to do with that? And also, what kind of evidence do we need to prove to the city that we have gone on our, done our due diligence within those 30 minutes? And also, if we get a call on a specific house and it's multiple calls, does that create a strike? If it's two or three calls that night and we still go out and do our due diligence, is there something, is there going to be a strike or any fine that we can face?
Well, I'm just curious, though, if you're getting a call three times a night, you're not doing something right.
Yes.
Because, you know, you either have to tell them to disperse, I mean, you have to do something. There's noise ordinances, 10 o'clock, blah, blah, so.
On different issues. Not just noise, it can be something else.
Yeah, yeah.
What?
Yeah, if I could.
Have you guys thought that out?
Please.
If I could, I would just say that I think it's similar to what's going on now. The difference is we have documentation on the city side. If you or CIVR gets that call, I assume if you arrive out there and you don't feel that the complaint was justified, there's only six people, there's not 20 people as alleged, you take a photograph, maybe you take a video, you have some documentation. So when code contacts you on Monday morning, you can say, no, here's what we did, we relayed that to the, to the host compliance 24/7 manager, it's verified, we have documentation of that and we review that. We're, we understand that this situation could potentially be ripe for the calls of I just don't like it next to me, so I'm going to call every time somebody's over there.
Yeah. So you expect us to go on the following day, if we get a couple of calls, come to the city and do a report?
Absolutely. We expect those conversations to happen.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. James Weatherall, I have a unit in Hamilton Cove. I just want to say I appreciate everything you guys do. Also, I felt terrible for the lady over here that's dealing with that stuff with the noise coming from her backyard all the time. It's awful situation and I think a lot of the stuff you guys are putting in place is really great. So I think everyone's got a good heart there and trying to work together to get something done that needs to be done. One thing I was kind of concerned with, and forgive me, I didn't get the gentleman's name that was speaking over the speakerphone, but it, a lot of what he said sounds great, but it seemed very vague on some of the wording. And I was hoping that when you guys put this into final writing, you can tighten it up. Because while everyone here might understand what you're saying, someone five years from now might not be able to if it's written the way that it was described to me. But, sorry?
He's just reciting what's already in the ordinance.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, so it just seemed like something that could be tightened up a little bit on the language side of things that might avoid some confusion later. As Mrs. Owen mentioned, it would be great if there was a way for the council to figure out a way to keep the taxes here in Avalon and do more stuff in the community. I was at the librarian's magic show with my kids the other day. It was absolutely fantastic and wonderful to see more of that stuff here. I have vacation rentals in other properties or other communities as well and those other ones actually have taxes that stays right in the local community instead of going to the Los Angeles city. And there's really great ways that we can report that, that you could force Airbnb and VRBO and these websites to do, where you just say you're not allowed to rent here unless you guys do actually push that cash directly towards us. Super simple to do. I can, I'll send an email out.
Our stay is here, just to clarify. Our TOT stays here.
I understand, but there's ways around it, I'm saying. And it'd be great if, again, tightened up. So I was just echoing that comment. I did have two, I had one comment. I've unfortunately been in this situation before where I actually didn't have a renter at my property in Lake Arrowhead and someone was making claims that there was noise violation going on, just basically making stuff up. So I'm hoping there's a way that the council will address those things. I'm sure it was in there, but I can think of people in this room that would do that kind of thing to unfortunately just try to get someone to get a strike. So I'm assuming you guys have some check and balance in there to do that. And then I just wanted to clarify one thing. The three-strikes policy, does that, does that reset annually? Or if I have a strike now and then 10 years from now, are those two strikes? I just want to understand that. Is that a 12-month reset?
I think in a year, is it not?
It has been brought up tonight and I think, you know, part of what I was going to suggest is since we're going to review this within the year anyway, that we'll have some data to be able to show, you know, where we're at. So then we can determine if you want to make it a year or have it reset or certain ones reset, we can have that. But, yeah, I think that that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. I just, it would be a shame, you have one violation now and then five years from now, another one five.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, anyway, thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Evening, Dave Thompson, 110 Chimes. The reason that we're here is not to attack anybody. What we're trying to do is to make more local housing. It is such a crisis. So anything and everything that we can do to kind of head in that direction is what we need to be doing. Because the town is really suffering. We all know this. The limit of, the limit of 410 floating tonight, two weeks ago, it was floated 386. 386 is good. You can do that. You can do that right now, tonight. That'll help, okay? And then beyond that, I think that there has to be some other ways, like we were hearing that if people were to rent in the summer with some kind of commitment to free that property up, but it would have to follow the school year. It couldn't be into October. It would have to be in, you know, Labor Day through a certain time in June. And maybe there could be some, some combination there. That's a good combination. If people wanted to come off of the, of having a short-term rental, maybe the city could give them some incentive for that for like a year or two, saying, well, we'll pay for your trash and sewer if you make a commitment to go back to year-round housing, we'll help you do that transition. Those are my comments.
And you know, Dave, we are planning on building the units behind City Hall, which, for workforce housing, and that's a start because that's really what we need. Yes.
Good evening, council and mayor and everyone. I just first want to say thanks. That's two years of really hard work and research that you've put into this since you first placed the moratorium. Interesting, 240 dwelling units difference between the 2100 number we were given and 1864 that LA County's giving you. So just to get rid of my numbers, if we work with 1864 and a 410 cap, we are at 22% vacation rentals in town. And if we realize about Beacon Street, Tremont, Eucalyptus Hill, like I spoke about last meeting, and we actually only have 1,609 dwelling units that could ever be vacation rentals, we're at 25%, 25.4. So anyway, deep breath now. I would like an answer to transient rental license required when they're operating illegally when any person holds an active license or permit by a governmental agency indicating that a person is conducting that transient rental illegally. Please tell me who that is.
What section, can you give the section number?
3-1.302.
I'm sorry, one more time.
Large parties, large parties, not paying TOT, well, that wouldn't be health and safety, but whatever it is. I would love to see the wording, so the planning commission can go, oh, yeah, this is public health and safety, right? Just an idea, anyway. Appreciate that. And then as far as the basis for approval or denial of transient permit.
And let me re-explain to that and maybe Scott, you can provide some clarification. Because I learned today that there was a court case that you're, if you're, we would be discriminating against the other folks if we just gave preference or we limited the number. Some kind of a, you can't discriminate, basically, was the thing. And I think that happened in Tahoe. I don't know, Scott, if you're aware of that, but.
All right.
But, I mean, we can still look at, I mean, we have looked into it and we put some wording in there for the planning commission to help with that, but.
Well, the language in there is any more than one.
Any more than one, the planning, so the language goes to, if it's any more than one, the planning commission will consider whether additional converts it to a commercial use. Now, it may not be, there may be special circumstances. So what we're looking at is in each application, the planning commission is going to look at how many properties, if they have others, they have to identify that. And the planning commission can determine if they're using this as just a commercial operation on several, on several locations. And for that reason, they can deny it after one. We don't necessarily want to put a hard and fast rule because you could have issues where it's not, it's not hard and fast. Additionally, the health and safety language, that's from the state statute. And if we are very, very specific in terms of what constitutes a danger to the health and safety, if we put it specifically, we may miss instances. What will happen is in each individual instance, when someone is charged with this, it will, the charger allegations will be, this was a violation of health and safety because, and then we'll have the specifics. And then based upon those specifics, there will be a hearing as to whether the code was violated or the terms were violated. So no one will go into a hearing not knowing specifically what they are charged with. So hopefully that helps. And I didn't hear the first question on the definition of license and what section. So if we could, I can answer that if you.
Okay, Scott, so that's 3-1.302, item A.
That's what's considered prima facie evidence that they're operating.
Just who is that person that has an active license or permit by a governmental agency? Because it makes it sound like those are the only people that can provide evidence that it's an illegal rental. So I just was curious who that, who is that?
No, that's, that's the property owner. If the property owner has an active license, it's prima facie evidence that they are operating as a transient rental license, as a business. They're operating transiently. I mean, that's whether you advertise, whether you put out flyers, if you do those things.
So I, the way I understood it, and perhaps I'm wrong, is that this person that has the permit by a governmental agency was providing evidence that it was an illegal rental?
No, that's, if you're the property owner and you hold a business license with the city of Avalon saying that you're renting transiently, that's evidence that you're renting transiently. If you post flyers that say you're advertising it for rent, that's evidence that you're renting it transiently.
But what, your question is the governmental agency? Is that what you're?
Well, this was all about transient rentals that were operating illegally. So.
Right, right. No, this is, this is, you've been issued, the only, the only entity that issues a license is Avalon for this. And part of this purpose is, is to make certain that you, when you, when you do this, you have a license, you have a business license. What that means is, is that you've gone to Matt and Finance, you've got a license and you are required to report what your revenue is from the transient rental. And with that, in your monthly receipts, you have to give the city money for that. So this is all part of the licensing and payment requirements to make certain that the money goes directly to the city from the operators of this, whether it's, well, I mean, it's got to be the owner or, you know, an Airbnb is a company that facilitates the owners. But it's got to come from the operator, it's got to come from the owner, whether it's the owner writing a check or the, or the agent that, that runs his business.
Okay. Thank you. And I, one deep breath, right? Big breath, relax. This one's easy. I was wondering if you would consider having the host link on the signage on the vacation rentals?
We already, yeah, we're.
It's already on there? On the, on the sign as well? Because I did.
It's not on there now. We're going, that's part of it. That's what we were talking about earlier, yes.
Okay.
And it'll be on the city website and it'll be, believe me, we're going to get that number out.
On the sign. Okay. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Leslie.
Hello. My name's Cindy Hauser. Thank you for your service. I'm an owner in Hamilton Cove. I'm here representing both myself and my sister, who's also an owner in Hamilton Cove. Our unit is professionally managed by CIVR and we rent our unit about 100 nights a year. We stay in our unit over 100 nights a year. We are both financially and personally and completely committed to our unit and our, and this community, and we love it dearly. Those of us who own short-term rentals are not all nameless corporations and we are not monsters and we're not profiteers. We love this island as much as all of you do. I understand through a lot of the meetings I've watched that we have been painted with a pretty broad brush and I do, I'm offended by that characterization. I want you to know that I love this island. So with that said, I want to know how, we're not going to weaponize the complaint hotline. Concern would be number one, does the complainant have to be a neighbor, a direct neighbor, or can it be anyone who makes a complaint on a property? That's one question I have that I didn't see in the ordinance anywhere addressed. Does it?
It could be anybody.
It could be anyone. So how do we know? And we have seen people who are extremely anti-short-term rental. And again, we are a responsible party, we are responsible with the renters who go in there and we're professionally managed, not to mention the fact that, that Hamilton Cove has 24-hour security, that if you call, they generally respond within five minutes. So if we have someone who's very anti-short-term rental and they perpetually call on you with the effort to try and get you in front of hearings or to get your STR revoked, how are you going to protect that not happening and that not becoming a blunt instrument?
Yeah, I mean, we just had that conversation 10 minutes ago with the gentleman from CIVR, that, yeah, we recognize that that is a potential and that's part of the obligation on us and through host compliance to be able to document what's being reported at the time it's being reported, to be able to have follow-up and to be able to allow the property owner, the property manager to show evidence contrary to maybe what the complaint showed in real time. Right now, it's been very difficult doing that because two, three days later, when the complaint gets rehashed, nobody has that information as compared to being able to go there, get a short video, take a statement, yes, it's, it's accurate, no, it's not, and here's why and here's what we can prove. So yes, we, we recognize that that's an issue and that's an issue, the burden's going to be on the city to be able to document that.
I appreciate that. And again, Hamilton Cove is unique from a lot of the rest of the island because we do have our own security there and they are very, very responsive.
And, and we feel that that should make it easier for them to document what is happening in real time.
Okay. The other thing, I know the ordinance was really drafted because there was a concern about long-term housing here. It's important for me to note that if our unit was not a short-term rental and it wasn't, that you didn't get 100 nights of tax and 100 nights of people going to restaurants and shops and, and tours on the island, it would not be long-term housing for this. It would be, and even if it were, because we use it, so it wouldn't be that, but even if it were, it would be in excess of $6,000 a month. It would not be considered affordable housing. So I think that is not an assumption that you can make and I think that Hamilton Cove should be considered uniquely because it was developed as a short-term vacation spot. So I would like you to consider Hamilton Cove being taken out of any caps and any overlays of the neighborhoods because that's how it was developed, that was the coastal community. should be considered uniquely, because it was developed as a short-term vacation spot. So I would like to, you to consider Hamilton Cove being taken out of any caps and any overlays of the neighborhoods, because that's how it was developed, that was the Coastal Commission's granting of the development, and I think it's something you should consider. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, that's a common misconception.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly evidence contrary to that, so. We're, without, we, I guess we don't have to get into that, but there's, there is evidence contrary to that.
Can I ask a question before you speak? Sorry. Um, with regard to that concern and concerns about false calls, I would hope that there would not be, but I also assume that there will be.
Sure.
Do we need to look at whether it's now, or at the year mark, looking at if we need to have some kind of penalty structure for false calls?
We, we contemplate that going in, we didn't want to, for lack of a better term, I didn't want to paint it as that that was going to be a, a negative right out of the gate. Um, we want to go in this with eyes wide open, that we're going to try to make this work. If we see that that becomes a problem, I, I am confident we'll be able to document that, or, or get a, a clear indication that that might be what's going on, and we'll be able to document that and bring it back to council, and say, here's the problem we're seeing, you know, and here's some solutions to that. But right now, we recognize it's a possibility, but it's not a reality.
On something like that, we wouldn't have to wait a year.
No, I wouldn't think so, I also, yeah.
That would just, that would show up really fast.
I'm just also bringing it up, maybe to let people know that we will be watching how this is utilized, and don't want it to be utilized as that, and you can have your opinions, everyone does have their personal opinions, but that borders on harassment, so we're just going to lay it out right now, please don't consider doing that.
Right.
Because you could be fined.
Because you could be fined for harassment, and that's way more than any fine we could assess on anything, so.
Right.
And so we do have a way of seeing and tracking who is making the complaints?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, come on up.
Uh, Bobby Hyer, I live up, or house up in Hamilton Cove, and I just wanted to start and thank all you for all of your efforts, um, on all the new rules and regulations. I know it's been a lot of time and effort, so thank you for everything you guys have done. Um, I'd also like to start by saying I completely understand what the position of Debbie Wright, and I really do feel for the issues that she has to deal with, especially when there are bad vacation renters out there, and rentals are abused. This situation is not good for anybody, and it's not right for, for people to have to deal with this. So, you know, I, I really do believe that the new rules and regulations are going to help curb a lot of that, and get, uh, vacation renters, uh, who want to be here and do right for the community. Um, and I'm going to be quick, just because it's already been mentioned, but my, my one concern is with three, three strikes rule, and it's really over a long period of time, and since it's already been mentioned, I won't spend much time up here, I'll, I'll get down, but, you know, just, it's, it's just a concern if, you know, if an owner's trying to do the right thing, and trying to have a property management company run it, and trying to take care of people who are a problem, and they get a strike here, and then a strike two years later, and then a strike three years later, and all of a sudden, and they lose their license after three to five years, and in general, they really have had good renters. I just would like the council to consider a way that they just don't outright lose their license when they're actually trying to do things correctly.
And here, it's, it's in one year, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
We're, we're going to look at that, yeah, but we all agree that that should be something that we.
It doesn't pull you down, it's, yes, yeah.
Right.
Hi, my name is Rickley Luftbach. My wife Nancy and I own a small condo at Hamilton Cove. We live in Mammoth Lakes, I'm a retired real estate attorney up there in Mammoth Lakes. We went through exactly what you folks are going through years ago. One of the ways that the town of Mammoth Lakes tried to address the problem with short-term renters was to increase the regulations time and time and time again. And what it did was, we're a responsible short-term rental owner. I come down here when it, I get sick of the snow, um, but I have to be able to rent it out in the summer to be able to afford it, that's just the way it is. And what, and I applaud you for trying to enforce this, and staff has done a phenomenal job of, you know, drafting a very detailed ordinance years ago, and it didn't work. So don't be surprised if that didn't solve the problems. What did solve the problems was to hire a code enforcement officer whose only job was to enforce these regulations, because the staff in Mammoth Lakes was already buried up to their eyeballs in doing their existing work. Now you throw on top of that, trying to go after the bad apples that were generated from Airbnb and Verbo, and who really don't care about the local communities, and don't rent through a reputable company like C I V R, somebody else locally who will take care of it, and they couldn't get it done. Surprise, surprise. So they went ahead and hired a code enforcement officer, and there were a bunch of us who kept saying, you know, go after them, we applaud you, do it, but you're going to need somebody to do it. So I just want you to know, where are you going? Don't be disappointed, um, but it's not going to solve it. The second thing is the abuse from false, you know, accusations. My son went to Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and there, they have a noise ordinance, because college parties, well, surprise, yeah, and I get it. And they moved in, we found this house, we couldn't believe it, we found a house for, he was in the engineering department, for he and a couple of other people. And within weeks of moving in, we found out why the house was available. Lady on the other side of the street hated college students, and I get a, I get a notice of a fine right away. I hop in the car, I drive down there, I stay for a whole week, because I don't believe that the kids haven't had parties, I think they've been partying. I talked to all the neighbors, and they all said, oh no, your, your son is great, they've been helpful, they've been quiet and all that, but knock on the door, there's the police, they're already on the second violation while I'm there. And I said to the, I went ballistic, okay, I'm sorry, my time is up. I went ballistic, the police were great, they said, go over and talk to the lady. I did, I made it very clear to her, if she filed another false complaint, I'd haul her into court, and we'll deal with it in court. But it's going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Natalie Ritchie, I'm in Hamilton Cove, and I have a question. Uh, we've been on the list for approximately 12 months, and so I understand, we're number eight, so maybe in the next few months, but we also have a vacation plan, well deserved, that what happens if I get called, and we have our vacation plan? Because obviously, they're saying, if you're not here.
If I could address that, you want me to address that?
Sure, I was just going to say, you know, we would make arrangements for that, but I mean, once we announce, once we announce scheduling these in front of planning commission, you know, we'll send out notices and make sure property owners are available.
And the ordinance does allow, the ordinance is currently draft that allows you to appear by Zoom.
You appear by Zoom.
Remotely.
But if I'm in Europe, and I can't, then do, can I, do I rotate to the next month, or do I lose my place?
I mean, we can, we can push things right, we're, we're not going to do this and say, oh, you didn't show, you're out of luck. I mean, if it's scheduled, and you're scheduled with the property owner's consent and knowledge, and they don't show up, then it's not going to be heard.
Okay, thank you.
Enjoy your vacation. Any, any others?
Good evening, and thanks for your service, speaking as someone who sat on the other side of a dius in a galaxy far, far away for many years. We can talk about Coastal Commission entitlements or not, at, at Hamilton Cove, and what they're involved, it may or may not have been, but what's not arguable is that the right to rent short-term was baked into the C C N Rs from day one, and everyone who's ever bought a unit there knew that. So any change of heart that's happened since then is a change of heart in it, but it doesn't change the material premise that people bought there from, including people who are still buying there. Um, such, anything that would threaten that or change it in a cap could and might, particularly due to, if it's not applied with overlays, and that's the hardest, harder way to do it, but it's really the only way to do it. Um, the other thing is about perceptions, and I'm not going to belabor the three-strikes rule any more than it already has been, but the three tiers of due process there go planning commission, you guys, then court. And there's been such a negative outpouring against anyone who's short-term rents for any reason at any level, and that perception's out there, and it's a bell that can't be unrung very easily. It does a little bit of incremental damage to the concept of due process. It seems like it's, it's a, it's a, you, you take my drift. Some owners that have been vilified, along with everybody else, the over-town people, the hedge fund managers, you're lumping some people that we know personally, who came to this island 30 years ago with virtually no language skills and no education, and managed to accrue some properties that they rent both long-term and short-term, and now their licenses, one has already been revoked, and it was revoked because he, this person felt intimidated by coming here and speaking before you and defending himself. He felt that it was, it was futile. He has others that are in the queue to wait, and he's very concerned about that. Um, it's how this gentleman built what he thought was going to be generational wealth, and he feels threatened by that. And to lump everyone in to one category is just, that's a bad, that's bad optics, and it's, it's not correct. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Any others? Okay, CJ, I saw Jordan looking, I know he was, he was peeking at it, but.
Hi, Jordan Lake, 311 Catalina Avenue. I realize, uh, dear mayor, council members and city staff, I realize, uh, you've covered a lot of this, and some of it will be addressed in future hearings, and is also redundant, but I think the quickest way is for me to probably just read it, instead of try to go through it. So I appreciate the opportunity to share my perspective, as you consider the potential changes to the regulation of the transient rentals in Avalon. I offer this input, input not only as a lifelong resident with over 35 years in the community, but also as a property owner, business owner, neighbor, and real estate professional who deeply values Avalon and its future. Throughout these discussions, I have heard repeated claims that Realtors or real estate professionals, which I am one, are responsible for the inflating of property prices, this is inaccurate. In practice, sellers offer, often aim to list properties above what professionals recommend. Ultimately, it's the market and the buyers that determine the value, offers above asking price are a reflection of demand and not manipulations by Realtors. I say this just to clarify misconceptions about Realtors and our role in property values. But on that note, um, I'm not opposed to regulation, or capping, or transient rentals, it's just the enforcement of everything that you guys are putting in place that's going to be the key. I like the idea of having a dedicated code enforcement officer, maybe the T O T can pay for that, I don't know, that's for you guys to figure out. But I take my role seriously as advising property owners about features that contribute to long-term value, which is location, view, attributes, and yes, the ability to operate as a long-term compliant, short-term rental. All these things factor in. Fair process, transparency, and equity, if the council choose to implement a camp, transparency and fairness must guide the process. It should be a case-by-case basis. Saturation is an issue, but every neighborhood is different. Some people hate it, Lower Descanso, some people don't mind it, I'm not going to name it a street, but I live on Catalina Avenue, we're saturated. I'm not going to speak for all the people on Catalina Avenue, because not all of them probably agree with this, but if it's case-by-case, the saturation map's provided, people should have to appear in person to apply, people should have to appear in person to object. Both sides heard, planning commission does their job and votes, and, end of story. That's fair, I just think that that's fair, you know? You have addressed REVA application after revocation, it's a one-year process, I think if they fix the problem, show compliance, are willing to change their ways, you guys are figuring that out with the one-year thing, so I'm not going to worry about that. Regarding ownership limits and equity, there's the ongoing discussion about whether individuals or entities should be allowed to own multiple properties or short-term rentals. This raises an important equity question, why should an individual or entity be allowed to own multiple long-term rental properties, but not short-term rental properties? Both have similar impacts to housing supply, for example, some businesses rent several long-term units for staff housing, further reducing availability for, availability for potential buyers or other renters. The policy should consider the dynamic holistically and consistently. You guys are doing that with the commercial versus residential, I got that.
Okay, and your three minutes are up.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Does anybody concede their time to Jordan? Okay, in the back, they'll give you, they'll give you.
Okay, I got a little bit more time.
And your name is?
Jose.
Jose Mano Rodriguez.
Thank you.
HOA restricted units and the future of single transient rental availability. When a value and saturation of availability, we must include units with planned development such as Canyon Terrace, Fairview Terrace, Bahia Vista, and Hamilton Cove. In these complexes, short-term rental permission is determined by HOA, not the city. Well, um, the sentiment with these HOAs can shift over time. For example, Canyon Terrace currently allows only two grandfathered transient rentals, but new owners and boards' elections could reverse prior restrictions, allowing more license to become available. That could happen in Fairview, if you get the majority up there that decide they want them again, they could bring them back, so it's an option. Conversely, communities like Bahia Vista and Hamilton Cove are unlikely to restrict single, short, short-term rentals, because many of the owners actively use their properties in that capacity, there's just the majority out there. So, um, again, that falls into the case-by-case saturation, everybody apply, get a fair hearing, planning commission decides. Conditional use permits and property value. The late Earl Schrader, my mentor and former owner of Catalina Realtors, often said that conditional use permits were never supposed to increase the value of the properties. I think you guys have accomplished that with the code changing in 2021, with the one-time transfer, once they're all short-term rentals, which will eventually happen, you've eliminated that value. The ones that are left with the one-time transfer will increasingly get more and more valuable, because they'll be less avowed, and you have got neighbors not necessarily allowing them, and that makes those more valuable, and that's just life, and we'll deal with it, but you have, I think, solved that problem. My conclusion is, I love this island, I love the people who grew up here, and those who visit and fall in love with Avalon like we all have, I believe we can all find a thoughtful, fair, and enforceable path forward that preserves the integrity of our community, protects neighbors, and allows property owners to participate in the short-term rental economy, as long as they comply with the rules asked forth by you guys. I think you're doing a good job, I appreciate everything you guys have done, the hard work, and everybody's opinions are valuable. Thank you for dedication to this community, and for considering my input as part of this important discussion. Jordan Lake.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to kind of wrap it up, unless we got somebody else that wants to talk.
Bart Glass, 45, Gaviola, I own Hamilton Cove Real Estate, I've been selling property here for over 35 years, um, also do vacation rentals.
You might want to put the mic a little closer.
Um, we've always tried to get people just to get along with each other, because we know there's people that don't want to rent, and there's people that want to rent. One thing that concerns me, noise complaints, stuff like that, we normally respond to right away, I live there, so they call my phone at my house, I go take care of it. You're cutting that out by sending this to another party for them to then call me, it's going to take more time to get there to actually stop what's going on. And then, if you have an owner in a unit, or you have guests of the owner in the unit, I'm still going to get the phone call, because you guys don't know who's in the unit, you have no idea, nor does the neighbor. So when the neighbor calls and says, you know, these people are being too loud, now I've got to come down here and defend myself to you all, because the neighbor has said that my renters, which they weren't renters, these are owners, or the owners' guests stayed in there. This is going to take up a lot of our time to do, to defend against this stuff. I don't think this is going to create squat as far as new housing. I sell these places all the time, I don't know any of you up there that do, but when, when they, people buy these, they buy them to use them. And short-term renting is just when they're not using them, but they buy them to use them, they're not going to rent them out year-round to you, the prices are too high. Our dues are 1823 a month for association, most of that, well, half of it's about insurance. The people use that money to help offset some of those dues, um, as well as your taxes and your mortgage and everything else. So they're really not being bought as just a, a business, because they don't make any sense, business-wise, when you look at the amount of money you spend. But one of my main concerns is, um, the city makes about 60% of its revenue off of T O Tax, which is C U P's, uh, vacation rentals and hotels. About a third of that is made by the vacation rental business. This provides jobs to maids, repair people, restaurants, all the shops, all the businesses, everything like that. When we put a cap on something, it's where it is now. No one's going to, there's one hotel being built now, it's the first hotel I've seen here in 40 years that I've lived here. So you're not going to increase your revenue any by just putting a cap on something. Those are basically my concerns, um, but I do look. Those are basically my concerns, but I do look at jobs and everything like that for the community, and I think this will eventually have a negative effect on jobs of the people that are able to work here. And again, I don't want to have to defend my owners or my owner's guests to you guys because someone's complained, especially when we know there's a bunch of people up here and out here that just hate vacation rentals. If someone's, you know, out there, they just don't like them, and that's a little tough to deal with. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And with regard to his first comment about, well, one of the things that Bart said was about people that have them and their association fees and everything, they're so expensive. But when you have four or five of them, you're not talking about personal use anymore, when you have four or five. I can't hear you.
There's like 20 people. I mean, we're around about 1,000.
I know, tons of them. I understand. Yeah. Okay, so what, just really quickly on Bart's comment about...
Owners and visitors.
Noisy owners and visitors and guests. What, how to preserve?
It doesn't change where we're currently at, right? I mean, there's still, I understand what Bart's saying. He's the one that is going to, that knows who's in the units. He's going to be the one dealing with it. What this does is it puts us, the city, in a position where we can identify in real time what's going on, what's being alleged, what's being done. That's what we're trying to do, because this notion of, oh, I file complaints with the city and I call and nothing's ever done, well, quite often, and we're getting it 48 to 72 hours after whatever happened, happened. You know, by the time Monday rolls around, and we're, we're on the complete negative side. We don't have any way of recreating what happened, tracking people down, and being able to verify what's being said. That's what this is going to do. So yes, will it cause that extra phone call to be made? Yeah, it will, but it will also be able to document it from beginning to end in real time of what's going on. I think that's far more valuable than what we're doing currently.
Anybody else? Okay, council?
I would just kind of like to clarify some things. I'm feeling a little bit of negativity out here, and I'm surprised at some of it. When the gentleman said that somebody was not a native English speaker and felt like he couldn't come forward, and he felt that it would be futile, I believe that we are all, we listen. We are not vindictive, and we care. That's why we're here. We get paid, you know, 200... No, you don't think we are? We're not compassionate people? Oh, well, that really hurts my heart, because I put a lot into this, and, you know, to step forward for your community is a huge responsibility. And so the thing about this situation is, first of all, a transient rental license is, is not a right. It's a license. A lot of towns, people say, oh, you can't tell people what they can do with their fines, what you can do with your property. And it's just as simple as that. Now, we're all trying to get along, and I agree with the woman that said earlier, back in the day before Airbnb and Verbo and all of that, it didn't feel like this, you know? CIVR was thriving, and they're, they've been a wonderful company. I've lived here for 30 years, and CIVR has always done a great job. And I don't think any of us have a problem with people that want a little piece of where they've been coming for all of their lives, but they just can't seem to afford it and rent it out when their family does not use it at various times of the year. That's what it was most of the time I've lived here. I think where it got a little out of control, and yes, you can call me out, as I was the one that said vultures, there have been people that, entities, LLCs, whatever, have come to this town and bought up several properties merely to rent them out as vacation rentals. They never, ever come here with their families. They just see this as a business opportunity. And I think that's where it's gotten out of hand, and that's what we're trying to get a handle on. And everybody that's so scared about the complaints, if you use VRBO or Airbnb or whatever, do you read the reviews of the people that apply to your rental? Because they do get reviewed as well. And if you can look and see that these people don't have a good reputation, by all means, do not rent to them. So there's a tool that you can use. But we're also not looking to instill fear in everyone, you know, with the one, two, three strikes and all this kind of stuff. How many times have the rentals that you own or the ones that you manage really get out of hand, that you're really that scared about? And I think Lisa said it earlier, if you're not, if that's happening, or Annie maybe, if it's happening multiple times, then you're not doing something right. You're not managing your property right. And, you know, look there. But also, this town is so different than anyone else in that we have a finite footprint. And with that comes a quality of life, which is what we're all trying to hold on to, too. Our sense of community is going away. It used to be you could trick-or-treat on the flats, you know, and it'd be packed, and there'd be kids, and there'd be candy and all that kind of stuff. And now you go around the flats, and all the houses are dark, because nobody lives here. So, and nobody up here thought, too, oh, you own a CUP? You own a vacation rental? Oh, well, just rent it full-time year-round. Nobody thinks that. I mean, we know that it's got a pencil out. It's just the idea of limiting and getting it, getting the pool down, like the person that was talking about, oh, this house, it rents all the time, and if the CUP doesn't go with it, then what's going to happen? Perhaps it's an opportunity for someone local to buy that place. Like Jordan, you just had an ad in the paper, a couple on Facebook, local owners, right? So something is happening where people are being able to, again, to afford someplace to live here, after living here forever, which, I've been here 30 years, I still rent. I've never been able to afford. So I just wanted to dispel some misconceptions that might be out there, you know? We're not monsters. We're, we don't hate vacation rentals. We just have to massage it and make it work for everyone in this town. And that's my soapbox. And I'm sorry you think we're monsters.
Okay, so as of right now, we have not really introduced any changes to this, right? There have been no recommendations to...
Yeah, the thing about the, when it goes down, the strikes, you know, like, if you have one, and then another one for five years or something, or...
Oh, so to make sure that we don't, yeah, yeah. But do we have to, because it says there's one, two, and three strikes in a year.
No, it doesn't. Mayor, it currently does not limit it to one year, so we could add that in if that's the council's direction.
Right.
I agree.
I think it's something from a consensus of council that they'd like to see is have that, have that acknowledged in there, Scott.
Oh, you were just talking about the state statute when you had it on there.
Correct, correct.
So it doesn't remove strikes if they're not over a certain time.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to, just for the record, we're going to revise the subsections 3 of 3-1.312, which says, well, now we, permit has violated this article or a condition of approval three or more times within a year, comma, even if cured. So it's within a year.
When does the year start? Does it matter?
It's going to be a rolling year. So it's not going to be, it'll be like, it'll be like the GIFTs regulation. It's just a rolling 12-year period, because if you can make it an annual basis, you could have two violations in December and two in January. So it'll just be a rolling year.
Got it.
It'll be rolling from, so the first strike initiates the year.
The roll.
The literal roll.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so there's that one change. Is there anything else?
I think it's, I'm just looking through notes from conversations that everyone had. I think it's maybe something to bring back for discussion, only because we haven't discussed it yet. The idea of, the idea of what happens with the process of sales that Karina brought up about the, the people who sell, who transfer, what happens with that, that maybe we can... The hard part, I think, is because how, how far, if you don't, am I asking, are you guys doing rentals a year in advance? Okay. So I don't know if we can look at, I don't know that the new owner would necessarily want to do a rental anyway, so they may have an issue with it anyway, but if there's something that we can at least start a conversation on that and be able to look at that over the next few months to see. Can you come to the microphone, though, please? Sorry.
I do see sons and daughters taking over from their parents, and that's considered a transfer. So I'm coming from a place where it's really not changing hands. It's in the same family, it's the same son that helped the father, you know, come and do maintenance on the property, and now cannot rent it anymore. And I feel, I find it very unfair.
And I think, I mean, I know you're not necessarily real estate lawyers, everyone on your team, some people are, that, that, you know, suggesting the idea of a trust might be the way to resolve that issue for families especially.
And that's already considered.
Yeah.
They could lose the permit if they did that, in some situations. Because it would be if they, if they bought a property that only transferred once, and that, that's when he transferred to the...
The first transfer and the second transfer, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I would just like to remind people, you don't need to wait for this to be enacted to report illegal rentals. Please report them. I don't know what you're waiting for. That doesn't make sense to me. If you think there's an illegal rental, please, please notify us. I, I think that it had been discussed already, for those who weren't here for the last meeting, we did ask city staff to bring back information regarding caps on neighborhoods or no caps on neighborhoods. That's going to be something that takes time to gather that information, so I know that that's something that they're already looking at. And again, I think the comment might have been made of ease of enforcement versus different rules for every neighborhood. I don't know that necessarily ease of enforcement for me is top of mind, but it also, to the gentleman's point, who brought up the discussion about the possibility of having a failure and/or an enforcement officer, it needs to be enforceable. If we can enforce something, it doesn't make sense to try to put it into place. And I think we're starting with a ton of new ordinances that hopefully will address the majority of the issues that cause people concern. I think we found a middle ground, hopefully, for most people, and the way that I can tell is I think we've managed to upset almost everybody, which means we found something you like and something you don't like. So I think that we could go hardcore one way and say, no, we're vacation rentals, whatever. We could go in the middle and say, here's a cap that we think might work, and we can try this out for a year and see what happens. We could go the other way and say, there's no cap, and I think we've gone to the middle of that space to try it out and see what happens. And I know that it's challenging to have to go into a new thing and have a number of unknowns. It's, it's rough. I appreciate that. But I also think we're trying to address some of the things that are the true root causes for concern, without having to do away with something we know actually is beneficial for a great number of people, including the city. So I think, hopefully, we're striking a middle ground that, you know, just makes everyone upset a little bit and not a lot a bit, that will hopefully find our way to something that works for everybody. And again, we're going to be revising this every year. I think that the ability to also bring things back, we don't have to wait for the year if we find something that's egregiously out of control. If it's something that's so horrible one way or the other, that can be brought up whenever it needs to be. So I know that people will want to continue to communicate about this. I'm hoping that everyone does. Please give us feedback. If you're seeing things that are happening, we want to be able to respond to that and not have it be something where you wait for a year to tell us what's going wrong. This is, it's a new process. It's something that hasn't been tried before in terms of how to enforce things and documenting everything, and so hopefully it allows for all of that.
Excellent. Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
I just wanted to make a comment real quick, because I usually don't open my mouth. I have been involved with city government often, since 2006. This is the first time that we've had a council willing to look at everything and actually get to a middle ground that could be beneficial to everyone. When I first got on the council, they were saying, no, there was no added value to a CUP. We've come to find out that there is. And looking at saturation, we're looking at things that have been going on. I've lived here for 29 years, and it's always there. We're always talking about vacation rentals. And now with the advancement of Airbnb and VRBO, it's come to a head that I think we're getting somewhere. So, but I just wanted to say that. This is, this is a conversation that happens all the time, and we've always talked about the market evening things out, but it's not doing that as much as it used to. So, just wanted to say that. And hopefully, we won't have to talk about it for another 19 years.
No, in one year.
Next year.
Next year.
No, I mean...
Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
Do we need to, so because we want to have that one addition of the change, do we need to...
Scott's already documented that one change as proposed.
Right. So that is, what I read into the record is what the ordinance would say, so we just do the recommended, recommended action, which would incorporate that change, and then we can hit, we can proceed.
Okay, so I'll move to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance repealing and replacing Article 3 of Chapter 1 of Title 3 of the Avalon Municipal Code, modifying the transient rental system with the change as included.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Item number 10.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you to everybody that's...
Thank you, everyone.
Should we take a five-minute break real quick? Is that okay?
For two, for two things?
Yeah, just turn the rest real quick, and that way everybody can clear out, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we don't want them to clear out. We want them to see everything we do.
You're saying we're taking a quick break?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eric.
Good evening, thank you. Now we're going to talk about operations-
Okay, if we could have it quiet in the back of the room, please, I appreciate it.
Come on, Matt.
Matt.
We're back in session.
Okay, so we're going to talk about operations and maintenance contract with Perk Water. Uh, we're going to, uh, talk about the five-year agreement, uh, give you a little bit of background, the contract overview, a little bit of the finances and next steps. So first initially, we had Montrose, um, who took over, uh, the operations for Enviro Strategies in 2012. Um, Montrose exited the, uh, the operation, as we all know, um, in 2019, um, excuse me, um, yeah, in 2019, so there needed to be a new agreement, and their, uh, Montrose, uh, contract was, um, all the way to 2024. But when they exited in 2022, my apologies, um, we, the city went and vetted out, they, um, gathered three different, um, agencies that were looking to take over the operation. In 2023, the city selected Perk Water through a very rigorous vetting process, and their contract then was, um, what Montrose had till 2024. Um, so in 2024, in December, we weren't ready to execute a new agreement. Um, I was brand new at the time, I needed at least six months to understand the operations and maintenance of Perk. Um, so we extended, uh, the current contract for six months, and then we extended it again for 90 days. Now, the extension gave, allowed us time to really completely revamp the contract. The previous one was a very vague scope of work, this one is more detailed, and let me go into, um, how this current contract formalizes our long-term partnership with them, and really see the successful transition and their, um, performance during this time. So the services, again, five years, but it includes MPDS compliance, order control, SCADA monitoring, biosolids handling, those are all things that were in the previous contract, but the really unique thing is now that we're actually dividing who does what. What is the responsibility for city, what is responsibility for Perk? So Perk is going to do saltwater distribution systems, regular preventative maintenance, regularly, um, maintenance of the lift stations, inspections, monitoring and reporting, um, through a CMMS, uh, system, monthly and annual reporting, um, emergency response 24/7 with one-hour response time, and I think the unique thing with Perk, other than previous operators, that they have on-island certified operators and operation staff that live here. And one of the other unique things with them is that they have, uh, a great, uh, resources, they're na- nationwide, so they're able to draw upon resources, like 50 technical personnel that they have, that they can bring on island and do, um, consultant work, um, for some of those really specific, um, equipment maintenance and things. So the fee, so it, our, uh, the contract is going up, as you see the base fee going up about 25%, but, oh, this got cut off a little bit, but, um, the reason why is we're consolidating fees. Um, the base fee includes prevailing wage, permit costs, overtime, insurance. Um, one of the other things that we're, um, that you see in the total fee is that we're consolidating and putting together the maintenance budget, chemical purchases, any regulatory, um, compliance testing, so that wasn't, um, before into the contract, that was separated out, now it's all being consolidated into one, which is great. And if we see a cost savings, that's a cutoff right here on the, um, PowerPoint, but if we see a cost savings on the chemical purchases, that also is going to, um, the cost savings comes to the city, so that's, uh, very unique as well. So, overview and next steps, uh, during the perk tenure that I've been around, uh, I've seen consistency with them. Um, they're meeting or exceeding expectations, they prioritize preventative maintenance and long-term planning, which has been great, and what I've seen, it's more of a partnership with them. For example, we, um, are together working on a climate change plan that, uh, it meets the NPDS requirement, and we're addressing, we recently received a letter from the water board saying that there's, uh, 20 violations in 2023 with the transitions from Montrose and Perk. Um, so this was really interesting, the water board is two years behind on that, so these 20 violations, uh, which will come to council, um, next council meeting, we're working with, with Perk on addressing this letter, um, and how we're going to respond and meet with the water board to hopefully maybe, um, reduce, uh, reduce the violations or the fee of the violations. Um, so we'll have more to come on that for next council meeting, but again, it's, it's, uh, working with them on all of these different things that come up. So what I'm asking, or what we're asking for the city is approve authorization to execute the five-year agreement and support operational continuity and the regulatory compliance that we're already working with them. And then I have also Perk here, um, if you have any other questions.
Is there any comments that you two gentlemen would like to make?
Hi, Chris Maynes, Perk Water, mayor, council. Thank you. Um, can't say enough about Jackie's leadership and the work we've put into this new, uh, agreement over the last six months. Been a lot of back and forth, but I think it's a lot cleaner agreement, um, and it kind of spells out who's doing what. Um, obviously, we have a tremendous amount of responsibility to, to serve the community here and serve you, so we appreciate your renewed trust over the next five years, uh, and looking forward to this partnership, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions, am I in?
I just want to say that I used to work there several, several years ago, and, uh, it's, it's a far cry from what it used to be, in a good way, so, it's, a lot of improvements up there, so it's good.
Okay, counsel.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to approve a contract with Perk Water Corporation for an additional five-year term for the operation, management, maintenance, and monitoring of the City of Avalon wastewater system, designate funds from fiscal year 2526 sewer, saltwater, and storm drain budget accounts. Total expenditure is not to exceed a $2,464,335 annually.
I'll second.
Moved in second, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shigline?
Aye.
Mayor Puptem Lavell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for sticking around.
I'd like to say, sure.
Item number 11.
Item number 11, um, last but certainly, certainly not least, um, is, uh, request for council to adopt, uh, resolutions for memorandums of understanding, uh, and salary schedules related between the City of Avalon and Avalon municipal employees, confidential in the management labor contract period July 1st, 25 through June 30th, 28. So, this year, um, all of our labor MOUs were up. Um, we, a couple different things impacted, um, MOU discussions this year. Number one was the comp study that we engaged in. Uh, we were hoping to have that comp study and the results back in late February, early March, some things delayed that, we did not get that back till much later in the year, which delayed us being able to really sit down with, with all of our staff and, and discuss the MOUs, and also, um, if you recall, of the five MOUs we had in place, um, up through June 30th, two of those were represented by SEIU, and of those SEIU members that were, you know, um, that had the municipal employees, 12 of the 16 municipal employees left SEIU as the end of the year approached, so, um, it all, it left four municipal employees still in the SEIU unit, 12 outside the SEIU unit, um, which isn't a problem, other than it creates additional negotiation sessions that, that we had to have, that I had with each individual, uh, employee, really. So, so what we ended up doing, you know, is trying to group some of those folks into subgroups, you know, the finance team together and the, you know, the administrative assistants and the public works folks. So we, we tried to have those individual meetings with those groups, and usually the group selects representatives, and ultimately what we had happen is, I think, I think we met with every individual one of our coworkers, we all met together, okay, in individual meetings over the past cour-, course of the past couple months, um, to really resolve and come up with the new MOUs that you have before you. Um, I'm not going to go through each and every item, we list them out in the staff report, one through 14, and then some of the, uh, the benefits, but I do want to address a couple things. First of all, we received the comp study, and when we received the comp study, it's very difficult with Avalon, and everybody wants to say we're different, we're different, and, and we are in a number of different respects. It's very hard to find comparable cities to us, comparable employee bases to ours. Um, so when we went through that comp study, it, it gave us really two sets of numbers. One is just basic compensation, hourly rate, salary, and then benefits. And, and while our salary, uh, we might have been behind, uh, the market, the benefits brought us closer to the market average, we found, we, we were a little richer in our benefits than some of our comparative cities. So, you know, when we looked at that, we didn't want to just approach and say, okay, we want to get you to market on the overall package, we, we said, we want to get you to market on money, on, on the actual hourly rate, and that's what we did. So, what we did with our employee groups is, is we sat with them and said, we want to get you to market, we want to get each position with a salary range that's going to be the market rate where we're at in 2025. Um, and we don't want to fall in this problem again, so what we did is we took that for 2025, got them to market, and then added the two-and-a-half percent cost of living for 26 and 27, so each of the next two years, those ranges shift up two-and-a-half percent so we don't find ourselves falling behind market again. So, I'm very confident that what we're proposing to you tonight is, uh, a proposal for salary for all of our employees that is comparable to market. Um, we can, we've used the comp study to identify that, we've included some other things in this, such as addressing, um, you know, an increase in floating holiday, an increase in administrative leave, if they have administrative leave, we've modified the travel allowance from two commuter books a year to a flat $600 one-time payment, to make it easier for them to choose how they want to spend and when they want to spend their money for the travel allowance. We've increased bilingual pay from either zero or $25 a month to $100 a month, because we recognize the value in that, among other things. In addition, I think the, the big thing that we did is we, we looked at and saw where we were going, where CalPERS was going with healthcare, starting in January 1st, 2026. So of all the healthcare offerings that our employees have, uh, the one that's going up the most is going up 13.6% next year. So, we propose that we, the city, would take on the full brunt of that increase for all the employees for 2026, meaning, starting January 1st, when those increases go into effect, and they go into effect, depending on what plan you have, anywhere, 3.6% up to 13.5% increase for healthcare, our employees won't see any increase from where they're at today. Um, we've, we've committed that the city will, will make that full, um, payment, and what we also did is said, you know, we'll make that payment, we'll make that payment now as soon as we enter these agreements, in August of '25. So they'll get the benefit of those extra funds now, even though the health insurance hasn't gone up, so they'll see a little decrease now for the next five months, there'll be more in their paycheck, depending on what plan they're on, and then starting in January, they won't see any increase from where they've been in '25. So, um, it puts us in a position that at least until January of '27, healthcare will be locked in, and then what we've agreed to do in January '27 is increase the city cap by two-and-a-half percent, but if healthcare goes up an unforeseen amount, because we don't know what it's going to be, we're all in the dark a little bit on that, so if it goes up over 12.5%, we're going to come back to the table with them and talk about that. You know, our goal is to make it right, um, we don't want to, you know, give, give a salary increase here and then have it go out your, the other pocket to healthcare. So, those, those are the big changes, I would say, in this agreement, um, and as I indicated, the, the approach this year, this year was definitely different, because, um, we had the chance to meet almost one-on-one with every single employee, um, and discuss these issues, uh, there was much more engagement among, uh, all, all of us, all the coworkers, on understanding not only the process, but what's important to certain employees and what might not be on their- on their radar. A lot of, you know, you talk to young employees that are single, healthcare is just not on their radar. And then, when you start talking about the importance of that, or they hear their coworker who's got a family talk about how important it is, I, I thought it was an excellent exercise. It took a lot longer, but I think everybody got a lot more out of it. I think it's, gives us a better MOU, a better appreciation for where we're at, the amount of money that we're committing. And, and these three contracts represent about 2/3 of our full-time employees. So, we still have the other ones we're working on, and we hope to bring, you know, fire soon, and we'll, we'll see where the others go. But these MOUs are a significant financial commitment by the city and by what we're asking council to do. It's a significant financial commitment to our staff. We can, we know we can cover it financially. It's a, it's a worthwhile investment, and I, I think that, you know, they deserve it. A comp study says they deserve it. I'm all-in and supportive of doing this, so I'd highly recommend passing and approving the MOUs, and be more than happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. How do you decide who gets the bilingual pay?
So, the bilingual pay is for, really, the, the public-facing positions in order to carry on city business with the public. So, it's the department head makes that decision. As far as which individual, or whether or not they qualify and are able to speak, both of those are by the department head, and then they make the recommendation. So, you know, we know we have certain staff in finance that assists us continuously with, you know, assisting in, in, with language at City Hall, but that's, that's how we do it. The department head makes the recommendation. But it's really for, in order to carry on city business.
And just, let me ask a question, because somebody made the comment. So, you have public works guys that are out there on the streets every day doing whatever, and they get approached by people all the time.
Yeah.
But perhaps they're not being included. Is that correct?
That's, it is correct. It's correct in the sense that while we, we certainly appreciate that they are bilingual, they communicate bilingual with each other, they, bilingually, they, they do assist residents as needed, but it still has to fall under that they're carrying on the conduct of the city business. They're not assisting somebody to make a payment at the finance department, or get their commuter book, or get their vehicle subsidy, or submit something here at City Hall. So, we're trying to, to limit that, limit it for those reasons, but we, we do recognize that that's...
Yeah, those frontline people. I personally love that you bumped it to 100 bucks a month, you know, because I, because that, that's a, it's a major, it's a major thing, especially in Southern California. And all those people coming up to your window, and, you know, you have to have that skill, and you should be compensated for it. So, good job there.
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, and you probably don't know, or, okay, so you look from where we were to where we're going, that increases our benefit package, I mean, you have, you've removed some things, reduced some things, but are we talking about a half a million dollars?
Over, over the course of the contract, if, if we commit to everything, probably 1.1 million, Matt?
Yeah, yeah.
Contracts, how long?
Three years.
Three years.
And at least from the, the wage standpoint, as, as best I could, I tried to factor that into the budget. That was this year. I know on healthcare, for sure, we'll need to come back for a budget amendment. We may for labor, but I did try to anticipate, because I did have the benefit of having the comp study, or doing my own comp study, I, I tried to factor in some of those increases in the budget. So, once we have all the MOUs, we likely will be coming back to council with a, a full budget amendment, so we can outline what the total cost impact is. But I did try to factor that into the budget that was adopted. So, the full amount, some of that's already been absorbed in, in the budget numbers you saw.
And I just have another question, because I'm feeling really bad for the people who can't afford the PPO, and they're having to go to an HMO. And this facility does not accept HMOs, so they're having to take the day off, go over. I know one guy went over, found an HMO doctor, but we're not taking new patients.
Right.
Then you go somewhere else. Well, we're not taking new patients.
Right.
And I don't know if we can help them in that research. You're probably going to say it's not in our...
No, we are. We're, we're absolutely working with them. We understand that's a problem. We're talking to the hospital here about trying to get them all on board. Yep, absolutely. Now, it, I mean, we're one of the biggest employers on the island. We need them to take our, all of ours insurance, yes.
Yeah, I know. Okay, thank you. This, this was a lot of work.
And I, I want to thank Matt, Stephanie, Jocelyn. I mean, you know, from our standpoint, obviously, it was a group effort, but also all our coworkers. I mean, it was, you know, it was great having those conversations with them, and they all weren't, you know, they all weren't easy conversations, right? I mean, you know, people take it very personally, what they're getting paid, and they view that, you know, they, they view it's not a recognition, maybe, of what their contribution is, and that's absolutely not the case. I mean, we are extremely lucky here to have the staff that we have. We're competing with everybody else on the island for a lot of qualified, talented people, and we have to pay them, and, and I think that that's what we're doing here.
Great job on everybody's, and the people, and the employees for speaking up, like, and you allowing them to speak up, I think is really wonderful, instead of having one rep from each group or two. That makes a lot of sense.
Well, you look at the signature page on the one document. I think we have 20-something signature. They're all signing it, so.
Yeah.
We'll see if they actually show up and sign it, but they're all, they're all on there to sign it, yeah.
That's awesome. Okay, any other comments or questions or action?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolutions adopting memorandums of understanding and salary schedules between the City of Avalon and the Avalon Municipal Employee Confidential and Management Labor Associations for the contract period of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028.
I'll second.
Mary Segunit, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Pau Temleval?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Weren't you fortunate? You got to sit through the whole thing.